Okay. It would be helpful if we could just... It would be helpful if we could just... But it doesn't happen. Yeah. You know, kind of, well, my friend... So, um... So I'm... You know, maybe you know where... Do you want to go? Like, yeah, it seems like it's... I don't see, I guess it's off the top of my head. We're gonna talk about how to... Yeah, I think... Yeah. My, my... To stand up. Yeah, we were saying about doing the... Just for one program. Yeah. Well, I worked out my... What about, oh, we can... Is that what I said? Yeah. It's a little... Yeah. It's a little... It's on some... So... Yeah, I do too.
Well, Hickel's grandson, he said, all the kids that didn't believe you liked it or you... What changed? I don't know if you're into the physical layout or the...
Yeah, I know. We told him, Tim didn't know that. We said, hey, Tim. Because she, you guys have... She is for a higher... We needed to show that it was... Because she's still sitting there. Because you guys have to...
So at this time, I'm calling the school board meeting to session. Today is Monday, January 7th, 2019. All board members are present and happy new year to everyone. And at this time, Mr. Foster, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. And if we could have our opening statement from our school student board member?
We want to welcome you to our board meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the works of the Anchorage School District and this board. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. If you are unable to be physically present for the entire meeting, you may choose to tune into the municipality of Anchorage's Channel 9 or YouTube to watch the live stream. Recordings of the meeting are also available through the agenda in Board Docs.
Thank you. Is there any dissension over the agenda at this time? Ms. Heldy?
Yeah, I'd like to move to amend the agenda to add discussion of Anchorage School Board salary increases as provided in municipality of Anchorage Commission on Salaries and Emoluments of Elected Officials Resolution 2018-2.
And you'd like to add that to action items or...?
Um, uh, I...
Yeah, I think it's gonna have to go to non-action.
Yeah, that's what I...
Okay.
Non-action, thank you.
Let's second that.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we're gonna have our military report. And that's Colonel... Colonel?
Koranta, thank you.
Corrected. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. We need to vote, I'm sorry, Colonel. We need to vote to amend the agenda.
We'll have to do a voice vote because I'm not sent out on... As a action item.
So just do your call.
Yes. Mr. Foster? Mr. Heldy?
Yes.
Heldy?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Holliday? This amend the agenda to add a discussion on the school board? Yes?
Okay.
So all in favor?
Yeah. And so the approval agenda with that amendment is passed. Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to the school board again. Colonel John Koranta, Mission Support Group Commander here at Jay Bear. First, I wanted to say how grateful we as a community are that during and after the earthquake, it's the school district faculty and staff cared for and took care of our children in a way that makes us truly feel part of the community. So thank you for that. As we transition to Mountain Spur's final semester, we're gonna be partnering with the principal, Mrs. Walker, to ensure that it's a celebration of the history of the school on the base. We want to make sure that the support to students and parents and staff is good. And our youth program, which provides before and after-school care for students attending school district schools on Jay Bear, we're gonna work closely with the principals of the impact of the schools to ensure that that transition for the students is smooth. Regarding Greening Middle School and Eagle River Elementary School moves, recognizing the large scale of move of the Greening School and Eagle River Elementary School, we're grateful that the activity bus for Jay Bear, students attending both of those schools, has continued. This bus allows for many students to participate in after-school clubs, sports, and even homework help. And we appreciate the district's commitment to these students who don't reside within the traditional neighborhood boundary. Lastly, our military family life counselors who assist students as they transition around, our counselors that were assigned to Greening Middle School and to Eagle River Elementary School, they've moved along with those students to the new buildings to offer that same level of support for students. And these counselors have been welcomed into ASD schools for the past nine years, allowing military-connected students to take advantage of this unique program. We continue to stress that we appreciate the school district and the way that it embraces us as a community. And thank you for caring for and loving our students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now, Emma, do you, I know you guys haven't been in school, so you probably haven't to have a report. Emily? So our committee reports, do we have a report from governance?
Thank you, I'm disappointed. Yeah, we talked about a few different items at our December meeting. One was employment of relatives. We considered a policy revision on a notice requirement. After discussing the procedural safeguards, we voted not to proceed with that revision in a vote of one to one. We talked about committee roles, membership and voting, and what the, just to clarify that our committee should be three people. And remember, Marsette had considered redefining maybe ex officio after reading this report, so maybe you'll speak on that in a moment. That when they are referred to a committee, it's a two, three vote for anything to move forward in that committee. Remember, Foster clarified that we didn't just discuss requests for information from the administration, but more requests for analysis. Of course, we want free discussion between administration and board members, but if we're gonna ask for some sort of analysis, then that would be appropriate for a committee vote. And then in sending things to the appropriate committee, if you have a finance concern, a budget concern, then send it to the finance committee and more just support for following the committee process. We talked about superintendent evaluation falls under the review of the governance committee. A member, Marsette, is overseeing that process and it was, I think that continued. We talked about management audits. There are also governance committee. And I'll be reviewing our past audits and present a timeline or framework of what we might do in the future. And then the committee would then review that and come up with a plan. We also talked about school board funds for travel and board development. And there's a prior authorization that the super, that the president of the board reviews approval of any budget item for board development and related travel. And then there was a code of ethics one that we'll see on the agenda tonight that came out of a Department of Safety audit regarding some FBI background checks. And we'll just talk about that when it comes up as a non-action item.
Okay. And I did want to comment because I wasn't able to make that meeting, but there has been some conversation about the president being an ex officio member of those. An ex officio usually has a voting, is a voting member. So I'm hoping that in our next governance meeting, we can maybe add something to that which just says the president should be an ex officio, non-voting member of all committees except the nominating committee. Exception is when a committee does not have a quorum and the president would be, have to be a voting member. And then that would justify the, and we can, our bylaws or policies can oversee Robert's rule. Yes?
If you could just send me the wording on that, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I will. Thank you. And our communications?
So our last communications committee meeting was on November 14th. And then we had our, in lieu of the meeting in December, we had our legislative priorities lunch with our Anchorage delegation. And thank you all the board members who participated in that. Our next meeting was scheduled for the 16th. I do need to reschedule that because I'll be out of town that day. So I will let everybody know when that, it'll probably be the following week.
And finance?
Finance has not met since our last meeting. We are tentatively scheduled for January 22nd.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, I'm going to read the statement on our public testimony on non-agenda and non-action items. And the board welcomes public comments on agenda items, both action and non-action, as well as in general. We value public comment as it both ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, concerns, and informs our decision-making process. We have a table front and center with two seats and microphones available for testimony when I call your name. You will have three minutes to testify. And you begin speaking when you see the countdown clock to your left. When you have 30 seconds left, the number will turn yellow. And when the timer reaches zero, please finish your sentence. And I am gonna ask participants to be very conscious of that three minutes because we do have quite a few testifying this evening. In order to provide equity to all that would like to speak, the board asks that there be no clapping after testimony as it may intimidate others wishing to testify with opposing opinions. And additionally, it's not a practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The board will consider all information shared by the public. And when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to administration for follow-up. And our first speakers are Jessica Noble and Carrie Carpenter. And Jessica, you will be our first speaker when you see the countdown clock to the... Oh, Carrie, did you want to go first?
It's okay, Jessica.
Oh, okay. There you go.
Hi, my name is Jessica Noble. I have a fourth grader and a kindergartner in the Anchorage School District. And I wanted to speak today because my kindergartner can't finish his lunch currently during his allotted lunchtime. I really was compelled to speak when he started telling me he was hungry. And I can open up his lunchbox at night and I can tell you how my evening is gonna go by how much food is left in his lunchbox. I work full-time, so I'm not able to go to the school during the day and help him out. And this has really made me focus on a dinner. I feel like I rush breakfast because I'm getting to work. He's rushing lunch because he doesn't have enough time to eat. And so I really make sure that we have a healthy dinner and we're having discussions as a family. And then he has one meal that's relaxed and he has enough time to eat. And I'm not saying he's perfect. He absolutely dawdles. I'm sure other people have kindergartners that dawdle and it's just a fact of life that he needs a little bit more time. The other problem that I've had with him is that he can't open a milk carton. It never occurred to me before he went in kindergarten that he would not be able to open a milk carton. And that takes away from his eating time also. And I do think that there has to be other kindergartners and first graders and second graders and maybe even older kids out there in elementary school that need more time for lunch. And I also believe that we need more time for recess. I think especially Alaskan children. I think November, December, and January is very, very dark. And I think that, I personally spend 30 minutes a day at lunchtime. I try to get some vitamin D and some light. You go to work when it's dark, you come home when it's dark. And I really feel it's important for my kids to get some light during the day. So I would ask you guys to consider having 30-minute recess and 30-minute lunch for all elementary school children. I believe it's very important for their development, their ability to learn and to pay attention in class. And one of the solutions that I thought you could get 15 minutes of time after the WIND program or in exchange of the WIND program, because what my child needs is to be able to eat and to be able to play so that he can learn. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. And before you start, Carrie Spencer Carpenter, if you could come up? Sorry. And Carrie, you can begin when you see the clock.
Hello, school board members, Superintendent Bishop, and the rest of the ASD administration. My name is Carrie Carpenter and I am here tonight because I believe all children in our school district deserve to receive a good education and have their daily health and wellness needs met. ASD 6D is asking that every school provides a minimum of 30 minutes for lunch and 30 minutes for recess. I have heard on multiple occasions representatives of ASD comment that recess and lunch have not been cut in over 10 years. Last year, in the largest elementary school in the state of Alaska, recess and lunch was cut from 60 minutes to 45 minutes. The cut affected nearly 700 students. You will hear from some of those students this evening. And I hope you will listen to them because they are representatives of students struggling with these same issues all across our district. I've heard school board members say recess and lunch are important, but we just don't have time for it. And I have a story about that. Seven years ago, I was working as a civil engineer. My kids were one and three. My husband was also working full-time. We had a busy house. I thought I did not have time to fit anything else in my schedule. But then I got cancer. I had to make time for the treatment. And we're not talking about 15 minutes of treatment. We're talking about hours upon hours upon hours of treatment. We make time in our schedules for the things that are important. The health and wellness of our kids is as important as their reading scores and we need to make time for it. The good news is, we don't have to pick reading scores versus healthy children. The way to better reading scores is through better health and wellness. The achievement gap continues to widen, but we can change that. Given a choice, parents across the school district are overwhelmingly choosing schools that allow for longer recess and lunch. Why is it just the lucky kids that attend the charter schools and optional schools that get the time needed to eat lunch and get exercise required for their brains? I'm here tonight to speak not just for my children. As you will see, they can speak for themselves. But I also want to represent the parents that can't be here tonight because they work two jobs. I want to speak for the parents that love their kids just as much, but they don't have the financial resources or the time and transportation that is required for activities like Junior Nordic after school. And the neighborhood isn't safe enough for the kids to play outside. These are the kids from the Title I schools, the schools that have lower test scores. Some of these kids will only get their physical activity during school hours and they'll eat a bag of potato chips for dinner. These kids deserve as much from their school as the kids that go to other schools that provide what we are asking for. Help close the achievement gap. Feed hungry kids. Provide the brain food, nutrition, and exercise that will help all kids reach their potential. 5,300 people have signed our petition and we are asking you to pay attention to the concerns of the community. Then we can all sleep at night knowing that we've done the right thing. We've made time for the things that are important for our kids to grow and thrive, not just as readers, but as human beings.
Thank you. And Spencer? I think you'll see the clock right over here.
Hello, my name is Spencer Carpenter and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to share. I'm a fifth grader at Sand Lake and one of many students that have come to testify today. I've been noticing some changes since our lunch and recess was shortened. When our recess was shortened to 20 minutes and our lunch to 25 minutes, I noticed that some of the students that were having a hard time already were having an even harder time. For example, one of the students in my class that was having a tough time, your normal troublemaker. But after recess was shortened, he didn't get all of his energy out. He started to stay and do inappropriate things and curse a lot. It only got worse as time went on. This has also affected me too. Oftentimes, I am restless and hungry during class. I've seen this in other students as well. In the lunchroom, which, by the way, mean almost all of the other students dislike compared to when we had lunch in our classrooms, there are adults yelling at us to be quiet. Not only that, but when our principal comes in, we are not allowed to talk at all. There are at most times about 200 kids in the lunchroom, half of which are probably talking. How do you expect it to be quiet? Lunch is 25 minutes out of 45 that we are allowed to talk to each other. It seems wrong to take that away from us. There's also this job that you can do called CIA, Cafeteria Intelligence Agency. To do CIA, you have to have good grades and finish lunch two to 10 minutes early to go around the NPR pushing a trash can and saying, "Trash, does anybody have trash?" However, some students may disagree. I do not like this. It encourages students to eat faster than we already have to and it allows kids to throw away half or uneaten lunches either because they don't have time to finish them or they don't want to eat them. This brings me to my next topic. Because we have lunch before recess, some bad things are happening. If kids are excited for recess, they'll be eating too fast either because they are really excited for recess or they want to be first in line to get outside. They also don't eat as much because they haven't exercised yet. If we were to have recess first, students would have just gotten 20 minutes of exercise and would be a lot hungrier, resulting in more of their lunch being finished. I hope that even if we do not get a longer lunch and recess period, you will consider swapping when lunch and recess happen. Sand Lake Elementary is the school of the lion, the king of the jungle. Lions are smart, a symbol of strength and power. How do you expect all 700 of us to be strong, smart, the figure of discipline, with a short lunch and recess which causes restlessness, boredom, and other negative emotions? I hope you change your mind about shortening lunch and recess. This means a lot to all of us students. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Spencer. And I have Anna and Clint Carpenter? And Anna, would you like to go first? Okay. You can begin.
Hi, my name is Anya Carpenter and I'm a third grader at Sand Lake Elementary School. I'm here to talk about lunch and recess and how it affects me and other kids. I have strong emotions and other people like me have strong emotions too. Strong emotions are really hard to control. Like if I get angry, I get so angry and I have a hard, a hard time controlling it. My strong emotions can be caused by not getting enough exercise and enough food. I also want to talk about getting hangry. At lunch, the longest amount of time that students get to eat is 13 minutes. I need food for energy and I need energy to concentrate at school. During lunch, kids like me do not eat very fast, so they do not finish their entire lunch, whether they packed it from home or they got the hot lunch. If kids don't eat their lunches and then they are put, their lunches are put in the trash. When the lunches are put in the trash, lots and lots of food is wasted. When you waste lots of food, it causes big problems for us, like extra food waste that we wouldn't have if you gave kids the time to eat their lunch. When I am hangry, I feel like I lose control. If I lose control, I feel like I can hurt my friends and family, not physically, but emotionally. And if I say something when I'm upset, I can hurt feelings. And I don't want to say that stuff. I'm just hangry. During school, teachers tell you the time to talk to your friends at lunch. But during lunch, our teachers are yelling at us to be quiet. Recess isn't actually the only time we get to talk to friends. I think talking to friends is important because you get to tell them how you feel and you can ask them if you need help. You can express emotions and let your friends know that you might need a friend right now. Also, during recess, you get to exercise. Exercise is very important for everyone because it makes you healthier and it tends to take away energy if you have too much energy. If you have too much energy, it's easier to get angry and frustrated at school. So a break lets you spend that negative energy and rest. Kids need that. I also get strong emotions when I don't exercise. Every child should get an hour. Some kids don't get that much. Exercise is because they don't have time or or money after school to sign up for extra sports. When I get a break from school, it lets my mind reset and calm down and lets me go do a bunch more work than I was able to do before. Go noodle is something that some people do at school. It is helpful and gives you exercise. One thing it doesn't give you is fresh air. I'll invest after I have just gotten a bunch of exercise. I'm pumped after recess to come in and do the work and I'm more enthusiastic about doing it too. When I'm outside, I like to run and round and talk to my friends. I hope you will make recess and lunch longer at our school like it was before. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, would you go ahead and begin, Ms. Clint?
Hi, my name is Clint Carpenter and I'm fortunate to be the proud parent of the two kids that you just heard from at Sand Lake Elementary. I'd like to talk a little bit about recess and academic achievement. When we first started campaigning to have Sand Lake restore their recess time, a common refrain that we heard from both administration, school district officials, and others was that they love recess. Recession is wonderful. It helps build healthy children, helps fight childhood obesity, provides wonderful social interactions. But they have a mandate to provide a certain level of scholastic achievement from our children. And their take was that that achievement was best earned through education time with children in seats. And it set up this conflict between choosing from the benefits of recess versus that time in seats. And my point is that we don't need to set these up as a conflict with each other. In fact, the recess time will help us reach our scholastic achievement goals and achieve higher test scores. Our children can achieve more if they're more efficient at the learning time they do get while they're in their seats. I don't know how it is for the other households here, but in our household, when we see a child having a problem, they're melting down or they're unable to deal with a routine task, we ask them immediately two questions. When did you last eat? And when did you last get some exercise? Because those two keys are fundamental in our household for how we can do problem solving and how we can deal with stressful situations. I don't think it's any different in our schools. And in fact, the studies back me up. There are literally hundreds of studies that I don't have time to show you tonight, but I can share links if anyone's interested, that show positive correlations between the amount of exercise that children get and their scholastic achievement. It turns out that more exercise means that children are more able to focus. They have a better ability to learn tough concepts and they can retain the information that they get. It's not just about the time in seats, but the quality of the learning that happens while the children are in those seats. If we could get just 4% more efficient of learning of the time that our children are in the classroom, we could make up the 15 minutes that we're asking we restore to those children in the classroom and in the lunchroom. I'm sorry, on the recess and in the lunchroom. So my conclusion is that this is not really just about balancing the needs of recess with our academic goals, but rather that lunch and recess are the means by which we can achieve our academic goals. They are the best way that we can get there. And we get the benefits of recess too. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could add Tobias and Shandra O. I figured you were only Tobias.
Hi, I'm Tobias Rule.
Hi, I'm Tobias Rule. I'm a parent of a five-year-old kindergartner. Him right here. That's first day of class. Ecstatic about his school. He loves his teacher. It's what you want. School board members, Madam Chair. When I heard about the cuts to recess, I was very upset. We are a very active family, physically active. And we're academically very strong. We've always been. Mom and dad, grandparents. We have awards about athletics all over the wall. Our kids in preschool spent at least three hours a day outside. Self-motivated play, creativity. Guess what's needed in the future economy? That's what's needed, creativity. How do we get it? Not through structured, sit-down instruction. It's mainly self-motivated, driven kids who are willing to learn, who love to go to school. In October, I can tell you, win the implementation of win was not a win for my family. This ecstatic kid, within just one day, from Sunday to Monday, turned out to be coming home upset, laying into his younger brother, frustrated, tired. He doesn't want to go back to school. Is that the right way? Schools are not failing. Teachers are not failing. We have teachers that have decades of experience. I've watched the entire, all the entire testimony from all the teachers for hours and hours. What I see this district needs is trust to be rebuilt between the teachers, the administration. And my question to you is, is the board failing?
Thank you for your testimony. Eleanor? When you see the clock. Oh, Shandra, I'm sorry.
Hi, yeah, my name is Shandra Poe. Eleanor's next, I think. I have two kids at Sand Lake Elementary and I am here tonight because I am also concerned about the reduction of their time for recess and lunch. At the start of the 2017-18 school year, our time was reduced by a quarter. It went from an hour to forty-five minutes. And this was done really silently. We had no idea it was coming at all. So not only was there no chance for input, there was actually no notice at all that this had happened. We didn't know about it until our son asked if he could wear his watch to school. I said, "Sure." And he timed it because he was so sure that it was so short. I don't think that's the way that I should find out about a change like that. That concerns me. We entrust our children to the public school system for six and a half hours every day. And for the first five years of our experience at ASD, this time was deemed adequate to provide that hour for combined lunch and recess. I think the time is still there. I do believe that everyone in this room has the creativity, the smarts, the willpower. I mean, you are obviously very dedicated to our kids and their education or you wouldn't be sitting in these seats. I mean, the fact that you do what you do, it's fantastic, but there is a problem here. And I don't think we have to wait till lengthen the school day. I don't think we have to make this be something that takes a super long time to fix. It is something that was done very quickly and like I said, very silently. And I would like to see it be undone. I would actually like to see it go up, honestly. But we'll take a first step, right? So at least going back to a half hour each is our basic ask. And for there to be more of this communication, I honestly don't believe there's anyone in this room that doesn't care deeply about our kids. I really, I really believe that. But this is an issue that is district-wide, very, very meaningful to many families who are being impacted, who have hungry kids coming home, pent-up frustrated kids coming home. My kids' attitudes about school have gotten worse since this happened. They're not as excited about school anymore and it breaks my heart because we love education at our house. So, thank you for your time and your consideration and we'll look forward to seeing a solution.
Thank you for your testimony. Now Eleanor. And Dr. Jennifer Perkins. And Eleanor, you'll go first when you see the clock start over there.
Hello, my name is Eleanor Poe and I am a sixth grader at Sand Lake Elementary School. I am here to inform you of my personal experience and what I see in my class with the shortening of lunch and recess. This year, my class and I are so fortunate to have teachers that take us outside to learn. On days when we do go out, I feel refreshed and ready to learn. I can approach things I don't want to learn with a growth mindset. My class is better behaved and can cause many less distractions. Being one of the kids that doesn't cause distractions, I can tell you that it gets really boring to sit there and listen to the teacher make behavioral corrections instead of teach. I once saw a quote, "The mind is not a vessel to be filled, but a fire to be kindled." Plutarch. If information is paper and wood and our teachers are the lighters, we're still missing one essential thing, oxygen. What better place to find that than outside? When I was in fourth grade, a year and a half ago, I used to have thirty minutes for lunch and thirty for recess. Now, I have twenty for lunch and twenty for recess. I know that when someone finally addresses the issue and solves the problem, it will no longer affect me because I am in sixth grade and leaving elementary school, but I hope that my little brother and my younger friends can have the experience that I used to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. And when you see the clock to your right.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Perkins. I'm a family physician at South Central Foundation. And as a family physician, I have the opportunity to learn about the health and the social challenges of multiple generations. I don't have much to add to the concise and I feel like very well-supported proposition that's been placed before you. But I would like to add just a couple stories from my own experience about why I think it's so important. I'm going to tell you about a girl that I call Ella. She's a nine-year-old. She's witty, she's smart. She also has a BMI that's above the ninety-nine percentile, so the Body Mass Index. She's the daughter of a single mom who is also obese. They have been trying so hard. They've made a lot of dietary interventions and yet they feel a little restricted by their limited budget. They also are really trying to incorporate more physical activity. Unfortunately, they live in one of these neighborhoods that neither Ella nor her mom feels safe to walk around. So the only physical activity she gets during the day is at school. Also, Ella comes home hungry and this was always perplexing to me. She snacks on whatever she can get her hands on until dinner. I never thought to ask about lunch because I knew she qualified for the free lunch. It wasn't until I became aware of this issue that I realized that she might not have time to eat. And then there's Anton. Anton is my eight-year-old. I'm calling him Anton, it's not his real name. He has ADHD. His mom left when he was three years old. His dad and new wife have a new baby. He spends most of his time with his grandma and his grandma is drunk probably three-quarters of the time. So anyway, Anton has a hard time controlling his anger. He lashes out with his body when he feels frustrated. That's the way he described it to me, it was very cute. He also tells me that he runs until his lungs hurt and then he's not mad anymore. I really hate to lose this for him, the small amount of time that he actually gets to be physically active. So even if I were the best doctor in the entire world, I have maybe ten percent of an effect on people's health outcomes. The rest of it really is mostly social and then decisions, right? So school is so much more, as you well know, than education. It's also structure for some kids. It's also nourishment. It's socialization. So I can treat Ella's diabetes and high blood pressure and heart disease, or we can decide to provide simple sensible interventions now, allowing kids to eat and play. Of course, we also need to do other things, right? It's not a simple fix. We need to support our teachers and prioritize reasonable class size, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I think it's a good place to start. And as you well know, these beautiful children are not numbers, they're our future and they're our hope.
Thank you. If I could add Shelley Biss and Annika Biss. And David, are you part of this group too?
Yes.
Okay, you want to come on up, David? David?
He's checking himself.
Oh, there he is. Yeah, and you can pull up another chair there if you like, just from the front.
My name is Anika, not Annika.
Okay, sorry.
A lot of people make that mistake.
And whoever would like to go first?
My name is Anika Biss and I am a fifth grader at Sand Lake Elementary School. I think that we should have more time for lunch and recess and this is why. When I was in fourth grade last year, I would often ask to go to the bathroom. For me, these times would be mini lunchtimes. I would sneak food into my pockets so that I can eat in the bathroom. This was because I did not have enough time to eat my lunch. The reason I don't do that this year is because my teacher is quick in the transition of subjects and I don't have time to go to the bathroom as much, but I'm still hungry. I also noticed at lunch, there was a lot of wasted food. I'm a CIA agent, meaning cafe intelligence agent. As a CIA, my job is to go around and collect trash during lunch. When I do that, the people ask me to put their extra food on the share cart because they do not have time to eat those items. Some of us are also slow chewers and we don't have time to finish lunch. So we stuff our lunch in our pockets, throw the lunch away, or put it on the share cart. On average, I don't have time to eat on my lunch. I would need about ten more minutes to eat on my lunch. Since I don't have time to eat my lunch, I am very hungry after school. Some of my friends ask me for my lunch that I did not eat and I give it to them. When I get home, I am very hungry and I need something substantial to eat before I do any activities. I have something like a dinner around four PM because I am so hungry. It is taking the place of a family dinner. Since my brother and I need to eat a lot after school, our family gave up on having a family dinner later in the evening since we are not hungry then. I am also aware of many studies that indicate that we need more time to eat and play. For instance, there was a study in which scientists studied two groups of kids. One group of kids had recess and one did not. They tested both groups. The kids who had recess scored higher than the ones who did not. There have been so many studies indicating that more physical activity leads to higher test scores. Recession will also benefit teachers. It gives them a break, time to plan, collect papers, meet with each other, and eat themselves. I think more time for lunch and recess is a win-win.
Thank you. And David, do you want to go next?
My name is... My name is David Biss and I'm a third grader at Sand Lake Elementary School. I think that we should have more time for lunch and recess and this is why. I've been dials with problems at sensory processing. That means I have to, I have struggle, struggling, I struggle, I struggle controlling my body since I need a lot of joint stimulation and pressure on my body. I had an EIP until last year and now I have a five or four plan that says I need more activity to help with this. For instance, I take a lot of breaks to the bathroom and to the water fountain. I have a weighted vest, I have a chair that walks. All of these things help, help me concentrate and have more control of my body. Recession PE do one dose for me and I have, and have helped me keep me in the general classroom with my peers. I do better with more activity. I'd be more focused and concentrate more if I had more recess. I know that I'm smart and it really helps when I can be calm and apply what I know. When I have PB and more activity during certain days, I'm in more control of my body. It really helps me to take a brain break and help me concentrate and be more disciplined. It helps me get better grades and do better on tests. I get in trouble more and get all crazy when I have more blue slips when I can't get the activity I need. When I have more activity, I'm more focused and do better score and I get higher grades. Without enough time to eat, it has led me and my peers to make some bad choices because there was not enough time for lunch and recess. Some of us sometimes sneak food from the share cart. We don't always ask permission for any washed food, lunch and hungry. With more lunch and recess time, we would not feel the need to do this since we would have the time to ask permission and eat what we need.
I am Shelley Biss and I am the parent of Anika and David who attend Sand Lake Elementary School. What I have to say is, what we have to say is personal family information and we're not in a habit of sharing with the general public, but I'm hoping that by sharing, we will help initiate some change. I have noticed a difference in both my children now that there is a less, less time for lunch and recess. With Anika, I have found that she has been very lightheaded and does not answer simple questions well after school until she gets something to eat. When I pick them up from school, the first question they have is, "Did you bring me something to eat?" My kids just seem really grossly hungry and I have scheduled time after school to eat about thirty or forty-five minutes before any activity. Without this time to eat, they are not able to do much of anything well. For David, I have found that he has more discipline problems when not given enough time to eat or be active. He brings his fruits and vegetables home, saying he does not have time to eat them for he prefers to eat the nutrient-rich foods first since they will stick with him longer. By the time he gets to his fruits and veggies, lunch is over. I have found a direct correlation between when he gets more time to play and take brain breaks and run outside and how focused and disciplined he is. I don't want him to have to cut corners to get his needs met. I don't like to know that he is lying to be able to eat his food or take from the share cart without permission because he feels like he has no time to ask. I have visited my children during lunchtime. A few years ago, my kids ate lunch in their classrooms. This seemed terrific for they could eat at their desks, they could talk with their peers, and they could have their winter recess gear close by. However, last year that changed and our school decided that lunch needed to happen in the NPR room. Now it takes five minutes to get to the NPR room, cutting into eating time. The NPR room is loud and it's hard to manage since the room echoes and there are three hundred-plus students crammed in the space eating at the same time. My kids are yelled at through a microphone and to stop talking and some were threatened to take recess away or to do detention if they did not comply. As a parent, this was shocking to see. Our kids just wanted unstructured time to visit and eat with their friends. Most of us get thirty minutes to an hour for lunch at their jobs. It seems silly that our kids only get twenty minutes total or an average of twelve minutes in front of their food, all the while asked not to talk. So what I'm asking is a revision to the school district's fifty-forty nutrition and wellness policy to mandate at least sixty minutes of lunch and recess. This seems like a reasonable amount of time for our kids to eat and play. I know that studies have found that more blood to the brain has indicated that it increases test scores and achievement levels. This and so many reasons are why I think we need more time. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Thank you.
Merity? And I apologize if I don't say these names correct. Merity Little and Leah? Selman, Selmans? Siemens?
Close, it's Latell.
Latell, okay, thank you. And you can begin when you're ready.
Thank you for taking the time out of your day to listen to my opinions on how much time students should get for lunch and recess. At my school, when I walk into the NPR for lunch, I have twenty minutes to get all the things I need, sit down, eat, and clean up. My usual routine for eating is get your lunch off the cart, sit down, and start eating immediately. This way, I have enough time to eat as much as I need. Others, however, are not so fortunate in the way that they have to get hot lunch. They may wait in line for up to five minutes before they, they can sit down to eat. When it is time to clean up, our school goes class by class. The first class may clean up five minutes before the end of lunch. If a student was, had to get hot lunch and they were in the first class to clean up, they may have ten minutes or less in front of their food to eat. This is not enough time to finish their lunch. Even I, with fifteen to eighteen minutes to eat, don't finish my four-part lunch. There have been improvements in my school at lunchtime. There is now a timer so that we know how much time we have left to eat. The lunch line also flows more smoothly, but there is still room for improvement. We could have more time for lunch. I am asking for thirty minutes for recess and thirty minutes for lunch. This way, all the students in my school and others can perform well. This way, we have, our grades will reflect what we try to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you, school board members. My name is Leah Slomons and I am a parent of a soon-to-be trailside kindergartner and I'm looking forward to so many things about next year. But I'm especially looking forward to my daughter's chance to forge new friendships, learn problem-solving with her peers, and to, to do that in a way that will make those lessons lasting. I am not yet actively a classroom parent, seeing these changes that students have described, but I am convinced by the body of research that shows the academic and social benefits of adequate recess time. And I have my own observations to share of my daughter being in two different in-home daycares over the past few years. In both of these cases, a very do-gooder, rule-follower kid came home with stories of the bad kid in her group of peers. And in both of these cases, the dedicated, caring caregiver knew that there was conflict. But in the first case, my daughter clung closely to the side of the caregiver and didn't really interact directly with the other, with the other child and declined to go outside and play in the backyard. At the current preschool she's at, there's more guidance to directing those children to work out their conflicts together and they play outside for extended periods of time. And over time, I heard an evolution of her relationship with the bad kid to the point now where she describes the imaginative games they play together. That she describes that, that child as her closest friend at the preschool. My most recent elementary school classroom experience has been as a volunteer coach for Girls on the Run, which is an activity and social program for third through fifth grade girls. I participated at this at a northeast Anchorage School District school and heard from the teachers that they were thrilled when our program started for the extra activity it got these girls. And these girls most particularly and keenly desired to just play together. And that was when they had a free choice activity, they would go out and play on the playground equipment. And that really flourished the relationships in that cohort. So my closing picture is just a sentimental one of going on a walk after preschool with my daughter and some of her friends and my daughter pointing out, "This is a, this is a bird nest I made for you," of another, to another girl. "When you're tired and grumpy, go here." I'm asking for thirty minutes recess so our kids have more bird nests.
Thank you. I could have David Carter and Henry Mouton. And David, you can go first. Let me see the clock there.
Good evening, Dave Carter, and I'm a retired attorney here in Anchorage. I didn't come to talk to what all the other people are talking to you about, but it ties into what I did intend to talk to you about. And that's common sense, logic, and reason. And I, I don't have any young kids in school, I have a dog in that fight, but it, it's completely irrational to force these kids to try to eat in such a shortened time or not to have enough exercise. That, that really tugs at my heart. And I hope, as a community, that we can do much better and fix that issue right away. And we can. Anyway, so what I came to talk to you about is rational and irrational thought. A lot of people don't read the newspaper anymore, but I still do and I paid for an ad which appeared in the E N on December twenty-first. And so on December seventh, there was a story about a state senator from Florida, modern-day senator, who after another school massacre down there said she had been inspired by Santa who spoke to her in a dream. Her suggestion prominently displayed in Santa We Trust in every public school in Florida. And her credulous colleagues thought that was a good idea. So some of you may have figured out that I am interchanging Santa or God. They are interchangeable, they're all made up by people. So we certainly don't want anybody suggesting that we should be trusting in gods which are just made up by people. We need more reason and rationale. Anyway, as I noted in my article, why do religious teachers fear having their students do their own research about things like the resurrection and ascension? You know the answer. Where is the evidence beyond what eight or ten people said they saw two thousand years ago? What did the other people there at the time say? Magicians can make large animals disappear and reappear. Was a magic show involved with Jesus? You are immoral if you would suggest that your students are somehow bad, if they use their natural curiosity, reason, and apply their own common sense to these matters. As a community, let's keep the conversation going. We can educate our citizens with accurate information. We can and should allow our citizens to inquire after additional evidence to support supernatural and inspired stories brought to us by our religious friends. It would appear they are mistaken and that many of our neighbors only say they believe in these things because they are told they need to believe in them. Enjoy the wetter solstice, be nice to each other all year long. Remember, we are all people. Try to be more humanitarian towards other humans. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see the clock, you begin.
Okay. So my name is Ari Mouton. I am in fourth grade in the highly gifted program at Rogers Park Elementary. So from the beginning of school at nine o'clock at the first bell, we have to, until three-thirty PM at school, we have, we have to follow rules and go to class. It can be kind of stressful for us. We stand in straight lines, walk in single file, no talking, no playing, most of the time, and work. Two days a week in my class, we have recess, I meant PE. Other than PE, recess is the only time we get to have physical education or a time to go run around. Recess and lunch are opportunities to really, relax, to socialize, also to unwind, and to prepare for another three hours of rules and work. In a six-hour day, only twenty minutes are we allowed just to play outside. Even twenty-five minutes that we get to eat, we are still following rules. Eat quietly, no getting up to get a drink or use the bathroom, raise your hand, do this, do that, be orderly and behave. Five minutes after the second bell, we start math. Math is in another room most of the time, so we line up quietly and walk single file to math. Right away, we start working. After math, we line up and walk single file and immediately start work. Then we do reading or another activity. Work is quite stressful for kids. Also, it's hard to concentrate and pay attention really long. At recess, we get to run and hang out with our friends and chill out. Also, we get to meet other kids in the school, but it's still limited because we can only meet kids that are in our own grade. We get to socialize with them, we get to relax and decompress and unwind. At lunch, we sit with our class. The, the kids we meet them every day and see all day. And also the clock that's telling us how much time we have left, it, it kind of stresses some people out to see how much time you have left. Who wants to be stressed out when you're eating? Probably no one. Also, we, we aren't allowed to get up to use the water fountain or, oh, use the bathroom. We are told we should have done that at recess. If we forget a fork or a spoon, we have to raise our hand and wait for a teacher to get one. And sometimes it really takes a long, which wastes lunchtime. By the time we get inside and seated, part of lunch is already gone and we don't have much time to eat.
Thank you. We have Brandon Wilson and Heather Poe next, please. Brandon, you're first.
Happy New Year, everyone. For the record, my name is Brendan Wilson. I'm the president of the Anchorage Principals Association. In accordance with Board Policies four-one, four-three, and four-two, four-three, and on behalf of the Anchorage Principals Association, I am notifying you of our intent to begin bargaining. We ask you to direct the superintendent and her administrative team to begin bargaining with us immediately. We further ask you to direct the administration to discuss amending our current contract rather than beginning our next one early, and we ask this for three reasons. First, and most importantly, it will restore trust. As member Don Lee pointed out at your last meeting, we were one of the bargaining groups that took you at your word that there could be no percentage salary increases for anyone during the duration of our contract. Reopening with us will assure us that circumstances have changed versus giving us reason to believe you did not bargain in good faith. Secondly, it supports the development of future instructional leaders. Just as teacher quality is the most important factor in student achievement in every classroom, the quality of the principal is the most significant driver for student growth in every school. Our most successful principals are often the ones who mastered their craft as teachers before moving into leadership. Comparing our current contract to the new AEA agreement, most teachers with a master's degree and fifteen years of experience would have to take a per diem pay cut to become an assistant principal next year. We need to provide incentives for our best teachers to become excellent school leaders, school leaders who will solve difficult problems like how do we balance the needs of kids mentally and physically, as you've heard about tonight. Finally, we understand that the district is weary of negotiations. Remediating our contract to keep pace with the new AEA agreement can be done quickly and respectfully. We do not wish to negotiate through the media, social media, or through any method that damages relationships. We offer this opportunity to support and foster a leadership pipeline and restore trust, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Heather, you can begin when you see the clock.
Hi, my name is Heather Poe and I'm a licensed and registered dietitian in the state of Alaska and the state of Idaho. And I am here today to talk to you about ASD-60. I specialize in disease management, acute care, also in outpatient counseling with eating disorders, bariatric surgery, and athletics. I have, I'm a mother of two boys, and so they are nine years old in third grade and six years old in first grade. And they attend the alternative school program at Northern Lights ABC. And I kind of wanted to present some things about the research that has to do with blood sugar levels and also with activity and then food choices and food behavior. Some of the research presents that children that need, they need actually twenty-five minutes of seated time before a meal to appropriately choose the healthy food groups, very specifically fruits and vegetables and the milk group. If they have less than twenty minutes, they are seen that they would just throw them away. So it increases food waste, the very thing that we're trying to increase in their diet. Also, students participating in the hot lunch, they have an average of seven to ten minutes less than those bringing home cold lunch from school or from home, excuse me. And that's because it's a long-serving line. So that gives them an average of maybe ten minutes before their meal. These various factors increase food waste and irritability and behavior issues due to low blood sugar. Also, the inability to focus because of that, poor academic performance, and then produces lower grades, higher rates of absenteeism as well. And it's been proposed, actually, by the Journal of Child and Nutrition Management to increase total cafeteria time to twenty-six minutes. This would allow about four minutes of transition time to and from the cafeteria if there's NPR, depending on whether kids actually eat lunch in their classrooms or not. This increases the time at least to twenty minutes of seated time for all children, depending, no matter what, if they're bringing hot or cold lunch. Currently at Northern Lights ABC, they have a snack time in the morning between nine and ten, and that lasts between five and fifteen minutes. Lunchtimes last between twenty and twenty-five minutes, depending on transition time. And recess is between twenty-five minutes. Scheduled time is twenty minutes of lunch and thirty minutes of recess. And what we see is that really the transition time between putting all their gear on in the wintertime becomes the biggest influence on that. We feel that schools have a huge influence and responsibility in teaching eating and physical activity behaviors due to the fact that many children eat possibly two out of three of their meals at school and yet receive most of their physical activity at school. On a personal note, I have two children and they're very different. I have one that has a human siphon, and so he pretty much eats everything whole. So I try to encourage him to actually chew his food for digestive reasons, whereas my youngest one doesn't even know there's food sitting in front of him and then he is a bit of a lullaby gagger. But the point is, is he actually, he embraces the creativity of eating. He likes to sit in front of it, play with his food, and he likes to play with different combinations. And that actually increases his ability to eat different foods. Thank you very much.
Thank you. July Lucky and Susan Beasley. Oh, sorry, Julie. I need to put my glasses back on.
That's the ultimate spelling, I'm sure. Hi, for the record, my name is Julie Lucky and I'm a parent of two kids at Inlet View Elementary School and the current president of the PTA. Today, I'm testifying in support of planning funds for Inlet View Elementary modernization and safety improvements. Sorry, that's a mouthful. I'm here today because I'm a little confused and I'm not sure if the board is confused and I'm hoping to provide a little bit of clarity. When my daughter started at Inlet View as a kindergartner, the Anchorage School District had a plan to methodically update and renovate the older elementary schools. I would call this the ultimate in deferred maintenance, a grand plan to renew aging infrastructure. By 2014, Inlet View Elementary was the next and I think one of the last schools on the list. At two-hundred-and-thirty-five students, our school was at eighty-six percent of the district's stated capacity of two-hundred-and-seventy-three students. However, at that time, the school board decided to take a breath before committing funds and determine whether all the schools in the district were needed. As a taxpayer, I supported this effort. What we learned through those studies was that Inlet View would cost more to close and in the latest CIP, it was even recommended that the planning funds appear to totally replace and expand our school. Oddly, with the addition of only about fifteen students, we are now at one-hundred-and-forty-three Oddly, with the addition of only about fifteen students, we are now at a hundred-and-forty-three percent of the district's stated capacity of a hundred-and-seventy. So there were some rumors that our school was being doubled, um, but our actual school count has not, student count has not gone up that much. That is, if I'm reading the documents right, but as I said before, I'm a little confused by the documents. Um, even though our school was proven to be worth the investment and five years older, Inlet View is again not on the bond as proposed in the district's six-year plan. We have also heard rumors that there are plans to consolidate our school with Central Middle School and then also heard conflicting statements that there are no plans or proposals to do so. So it's all very confusing for us, and so I was hoping to provide the board with some statements of clarity from what the parents want at Inlet View. First, the parents and community members do not support moving from our current location. If it is the district's intent to invest in Inlet View at our location, starting the planning process now would stop that rumor mill. I have had parents ask me every year that I've been on the PTA if they should bother enrolling their children here because they heard that our school was closing. So it would be great if we could at least put, put those rumors to bed. Inlet View is not under capacity in 2014 and is not overcrowded now. Our principals have tried to maximize our facility. We do have kids that go to some of the neighborhood charter schools, and we also have parents that choose to come to Inlet View for various reasons, either they went there as children and they want their kids to go there, or they may have been students previously and want to come back. I'm sorry, I realize I'm running out of time, so I'll try to be a little quick. Parents are not asking for extra classrooms or a two-story building. What parents want is to have the necessary modernization done, and that includes, I know that you received our written testimony, the items on our written testimony, which is safety improvements, including line of sight from the office to the front, um, to the front entrance, um, no rodents, and safety sprinklers, and if possible, we would like to have a gymnasium in addition to the NPR to offer more robust after-school and um, athletic programs, which has been done in other elementary schools. In short, we'd like to start the planning process now so the district can work with stakeholders and determine what's the best plan to move forward. By allocating planning funds now, whether from new bond proceeds or existing funds, we will be shovel-ready for construction funds as soon as the state bond moratorium is lifted. Thank you.
Thank you. And Susan, you can begin when you see that.
Okay. Hello, my name's Susan Beasley. I'm a pediatrician at Anchorage Pediatric Group, and I'm also the mother of young children enrolled in ASD elementary schools. So I'm speaking to you as a pediatrician and as a mother. This is the story that I hear. Jason is not eating his lunch because he spends his lunchtime in line. By the time he sits down, he eats his tater tots and wastes the protein and fresh food. Jason's been getting in trouble in the afternoons too, and he's having a hard time focusing. What should we do? We have a problem on our hands. Ten percent of the, of students have ADHD, another ten have behavior problems, and thirty-five percent are overweight. I am faced daily with increasing demands for stimulant prescriptions, growing mental health needs, and an overwhelming obesity epidemic. Pediatrics at its core is about preventing problems and forming healthy habits. That means helping children make healthy food choices. It also means giving children time to be active and free time to be creative and social. In my office, it means prescribing children five fruits and vegetables per day and an hour of playtime per day. I'm here in support of ASD sixty's initiative. Children need time to eat a relaxed and nutritious lunch, and they need more time to play during the school day. After waiting in line, children receiving subsidized lunches have only five to ten minutes to eat. A child recently told me that he did not want to eat an apple during his lunch because it takes too much time. Research shows that scheduling recess before lunch and allowing enough time to eat generates less food waste, that students make healthier choices, and that they have fewer disciplinary problems. By expanding the lunch block, we might achieve the CDC's recommended twenty-minute seated lunchtime and better long-term health outcomes. Play is not frivolous. Just as physical education has proven benefits for health and academic success, recess or unstructured play offers its own benefits. In fact, the American Academy of Pediatrics recently recommended that pediatricians write prescriptions for play. Play provides kids with time to rest, imagine, move, and socialize. Studies suggest that after recess, students are more attentive and better behaved. Recession also helps children acquire social skills that may not be achieved in the classroom. Through play, children learn valuable communication skills such as negotiation, cooperation, and problem solving. These skills help provide children a framework for managing stress and developing resilience. Let's focus on prevention. By supporting ASD sixty's initiative to expand lunch and recess, we are acting on the best available research regarding children's health and moving towards preventing problems. My hope is that by giving my patient Jason a prescription for play and by having a framework in place for him to play during his school day, it will be less necessary to prescribe him a stimulant in the future.
Thank you. We could have Kelly Lessons and James Hilger.
Good evening, it's nice to be before you again and not just behind the computer sending you things. My name is Kelly Lessons. My husband Dave and I are the parents of a second grader at Trailside and a four-year-old who will enter in two more years. When our daughter was in kindergarten, we stopped packing food that required extensive chewing, no more carrots. But even now, eating a lunch filled with soft foods in a proctored lunchroom relying on five minutes of silence, she will rarely finish and comes home ravenous. While this has been a major source of frustration, we ensure that she's not undernourished. We also prioritize additional opportunities for activity because her twenty-two-point-five minutes of recess provide only thirty percent of the moderate to vigorous activity that the CDC says she should engage in each day. But not all ASD families can compensate for what I'm calling scheduled shortfalls in their child's day. This year, all ASD elementary schools have been instructed to provide a minimum of forty-five minutes for recess and lunch. Certain charter and optional programs, however, exceed those standards. While the exceptions are wonderful, ASD's basic framework does not guarantee the minimum requirements set forth by the CDC or, as I've written to you before, Alaska's gold standard wellness policy that is developed by HHS. Both of these sources unequivocally state that students require at least twenty minutes of time to eat after being served and seated. However, more than ninety percent of teacher respondents to an ASD survey are, are reporting that the last child in line for hot lunch at their school averages less than the evidence-based minimum. One respondent even said that their kid has as few as five to seven minutes to eat his or her lunch. So I'm here tonight to ask the board to ensure that each school will create and provide a recess and lunch schedule incorporating at least thirty total minutes for recess each day and modifying this from the original ASD sixty ask because site specificity is really important here. And no fewer than twenty mu- uh, minutes for all students to eat lunch after being ser- excuse me, for all students to eat lunch after being seated. A thoroughly revised and publicized Board Policy fifty-forty would also require recess before lunch, require additional time in the lunch block for students to be served their food and protect students' right to recess. Even though such revisions will require carving fifteen minutes out of the existing day, ensuring this will uh, improve learning outcomes. Case in point, nearly every teacher at Aquarian has incorporated an additional fifteen-minute morning recess into their lesson plans. Even though some staff were initially hesitant about losing academic contact time, they now emphasize that this additional break, which happens in addition to a scheduled sixty-minute block for recess and lunch, renders fundamentally different results in students' focus and behavior than in-class brain breaks promote. Although these changes will require compromises and efficiencies, um, we are absolutely certain that they're going to bolster all students' long-term well-being, which I know each of you cares about. Thank you.
Thank you. James, we can begin when you see the clock there.
Thank you, school board, for the opportunity to uh, speak. Um, my name's James Hilger and I'm a parent of a first grader at Inlet View. I've been an Alaska resident for roughly two and a half years, and when my wife and I were choosing where to live, we chose a house in the Inlet View District because of hearing good things about that school. Uh, we've been very happy with the school and a lot of people we know from around Anchorage go to that school. But I know a few people that went to that school as a child and they commented to me when they were telling me that they're sending their kids to other schools that, have you seen that school? That's one of the oldest schools. I don't think they've done anything since I was there. When my child was, so I was a little apprehensive before the first day. I'm very happy with the school, um, but I, I um, I'm asking you to allocate some of the bond money to the planning for the restoring, I mean, for the uh, planning for the necessary safety and maintenance projects with the school. Um, the school is highly utilized, it hasn't, it has um, it lags behind school-wide on many of the assessments. You know, there's temporary trailer classrooms, um, and you've heard it before, but you know, as a parent, as someone that chose to send my child to that school, I think the school um, can be, you know, the facilities can be improved. A second point that I want to touch on today, I want to support, um, give my support to the ASD sixty um, initiative. As I mentioned, I have a first grader at Inlet View and I hear all the time from her and her friends that they don't have enough time to eat lunch. She eats her soft foods, her sandwiches that are easy to eat after school. The first thing she asks me is, do you have a snack? And I'll point, I'll look in her lunch and she'll eat the vegetables when I open up her lunchbox and eat them right away. So she says she doesn't have time. She's hungry, she'll eat whatever's in there right after school. And it's um, as everyone cited, there's a lot of research uh, that supports that it's important for these children to have time. Thank you very much for listening to my comments. I'm sure, I'm positive that all of you care deeply about the children, um, and that's why you're up here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? Yes, sir, if you could come up and state your name, please. Okay. So at this time, if there's no other testimony, um, I'm going to ask Dr. Bishop for her superintendent update.
Thank you, math president. It'll be uh, brief, I, I have prepared additional information and can comment on uh, some of the items from public testimony this evening if you'd like, but we will start with just very, very brief. Um, and if uh, Tom Roth could come forward, I believe. Tom, you're going to assist, it's easier to. So this is an update since the last board meeting and uh, just on the activities and actions taken in response to the November thirtieth earthquake. Um, as Tom works his way uh, to the front, we have very uh, brief information about our meetings with FEMA and the processes thereof. Uh, we did have an earlier meeting today in regard to um, a resolution to support additional funds and some questions that were asked uh, by board members in subsequent emails. I did my best to try to answer those if, if they come up, so we'll um, start with Mr. Roth.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, uh, through the board president. So as we had the opportunity to briefly discuss earlier today, uh, as a, as a result of the earthquake on the thirtieth of November, the district has been very cognizant of the programs that exist at the state and federal level for reimbursement of uh, costs that are incurred as a result of that incident. So I'd like to very briefly just cover where we stand. There, there are a couple of things that we have had the opportunity to uh, to pursue and, and complete uh, since that, that event. Next slide, please. So real quick, just to talk, the, the organizations that, that the district has been working with. And uh, by, by, by way of context, although we're not, we're not working side by side with the municipality of Anchorage, we, we are in communication with the, the city as they work through their own process. We are working with the state of Alaska, specifically the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management and, and through that organization, uh, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. So, next slide. The, these are the activities that the district has done alongside um, with uh, the DHS EM and FEMA. So on the, the seventeenth of December, uh, the, both those agencies were in Anchorage to, to go out and, and physically tour several sites that had experienced significant damage. In, in our case, we had coordinated for, for that group to go to Eagle River Elementary, Greening Middle School, Fire Lake, and uh, King Tech High School. Uh, due to time constraints, they, they had an opportunity to see the first three, but they did not get a chance to see uh, King Tech. The purpose again for them was to kind of get a sense for the extent of damage, uh, not just in the district, but within the municipality. So again, on this theme, yeah, our, our requirements to submit information is very, very specific and driven by, by FEMA uh, documentation uh, formats and requirements. So on the third of January, we, we did have a conference call uh, with Adjusters International and Title Basin. In, in short, uh, the, these are, uh, the Title Basin is a professional public adjustment service and the, the adjuster international are really consultants on the legal process. So it, it worked for us that uh, the person we spoke to from Title Basin actually was a former ASD member and pro bono provided us some insights in uh, his experiences dealing with FEMA uh, in terms of submissions, kind of look at the pitfalls uh, and what the requirements are and will be, you know, when we submit our, our, our products uh, for, for reimbursement. And then lastly, this week, uh, the Department of Homeland Security is, is coming to uh, the district to conduct training with, with all those departments that will be doing submissions um, as a part of this, this, this reimbursement process. Again, kind of along this, this same line of ensuring that what we submit is complete uh, and meets the, the requirements uh, of FEMA. So I'm, I'm happy to pause uh, for, for any questions or comments.
Board members, any comments or questions? I think we'll move forward.
Um, we can uh, just share something good in the community as um, and then we'll go to the next slides. But uh, featured, which was phenomenal, KTBAM News did a report on how the community rallied around Eagle River. So the teachers were able to shop at a, a local church that um, took in donations. But uh, Mike Davens, so the owner, business owner of McDonald's that was also closed donated five thousand dollars. So I just wanted to share some really great news with the board, uh, and the support provided to Eagle River teachers. Um, very quickly, I'll just run through some questions that might help um, explain as well, uh, some of the in- information that came up at our earlier meeting. And I will just uh, run through these and then have a, a written report for the board. Uh, but there was a request to expand on the twelve-twelve Anchorage Daily News article uh, with information. So at that time, uh, there were uh, a, a message uh, that, from the district about the five most damaged schools. And those damaged schools were really based off a Rust Order of um, magnitude, which were the initial assessments made within seventy-two hours. Uh, just so you know, as contractors complete the work, they'll continue to submit invoices and then they'll change from um, estimates to actual cost. And we are still receiving invoices from our contractors for the repair uh, with, within um, actually even with four weeks going out. So it may be some time before we have that actual number. Um, during Christmas break, uh, the architects were in schools just as Tom shared. Um, uh, and we also had those tours with FEMA. But the fourteen schools under engineering and architect assessments, which uh, really specifies the long-term uh, investment that may be needed in the schools as opposed to the short term. So we did spend over a million dollars in um, water extraction so that we wouldn't have any kind of mold or air quality. But that occurred in Eagle River High School. Eagle River High School um, isn't uh, one of our primary, can, it's on our fourteen list, but it isn't one of the most damaged schools anymore as it was reported in the paper. Uh, simply, at the short term, it had one of the highest costs um, at the time for extracting water. We had that at Diamond. Uh, most of our damage that needed to be addressed right away did occur for water damage and/or gas leaks. But I'll just, um, Eagle River Elementary School, Greening East High, Whaley, Chugak Elementary School, Diamond High School, Eagle River High School, Bear Valley, Fire Lake, Denali, Bartlett, King Tech, Mirror Lake, and Central. I'll put a list out for you, those actually are the fourteen. you. Those actually are the 14 schools that, uh, the engineers are taking a look at. Um, earlier today, we, uh, just talked about the HVAC and looking at upgrading systems, which, uh, certainly we have, uh, that flexibility if additional funds are, are provided. And we do really, uh, as stated, when, uh, the former bond was passed with re-roofing, the, it did include expenses for seismic upgrades to the roof. So, we don't just re-roof it. We actually build it up to building codes for seismic. And, and that's part of the expense. Um, we will organize, it was asked about organizing communications on the bond proposal. Uh, we do, uh, actually budget, the board every year puts some money in, in the budget for, um, a communication strategy to, uh, share, um, whether it's on, you know, written media or print media, um, radio, whatever it will be, so that we can, uh, really share with our community and garner support for the projects. Um, also, um, consider regular updated list of cost estimates. We do actually have this on our, um, or actually a, a publicized report of where projects are, all of our projects. Uh, and we keep that on the capital improvement. We're gonna take a look at that. Um, I can share the, uh, website where that is, so you can see that update, but we can add to it so that anyone in our community, similar to when our schools were, uh, red-tagged or, um, yellow-tagged or green-tagged, that it was dynamic and it changed as work was done, we can also do this. But, here's just a look at a current status report that is on our website. It's just hi- hidden, if you will, uh, in the capital planning. So, we can move it forward. But, I don't know if it's hot. Um, if not, you, just so you can see what it looks like, if you can hit it. I don't know if you're... Uh, so, it really has the location, the construction year, the funding source, project name, the current status, the design cost expected. So, lea- this, these types of, uh, data are presently on our website and we can expand those, uh, and actually direct the public, uh, more to them. So, we do keep, um, not only in the planning, but also in the construction. We have two different that are currently, uh, online. Uh, but we will, uh, meet with the team to fi- to figure that out, how we want to, um, really direct folks there to see the many projects and many bond proposals. So, we'll, we'll do that. Um, there's also identify additional considerations, um, around, and this is really, uh, speaking to what, uh, the board, the resolution that the board passed this afternoon, uh, to include obs- observations, recommendations for, uh, not only this 4 million increment for, uh, the bond projects, but also to share the information, uh, in the leeway provided, uh, to really address the liquidity of funds that we have available to us initially if this bond passes. Uh, we will, uh, go back to the C I A C, the kayak we call it, to, um, advocate for access to unexpendanted bond fund balance this spring. And I did mention this, and this came up, uh, in December. And immediately after the earthquake, when we were thinking of the damage and the scale of it, uh, we knew that we had, had prior bonds passed at a better rate, a 60/40, 70/30, that had, um, been expired. So, the projects were done and there were leftover money here and there. Presently, there's 12 million in that account, but only 3 and 1/2 million approximately is accessible because those projects have closed out. As we close out, some of the projects that I just showed you on this list, we may have additional resources available for us. And we did ask Deed for, um, permission to use those funds on earthquake, similar to having the leeway from our bond council to, to use funds for earthquake. At any given moment, and in fact, we've, um, used, we've, I think, covered five additional roofs on schools by this same process whereby a bond was passed previously, it came underfunded, and at the time, Deed will allow you, if you use their bond debt reimbursement program, they will allow you to put it in the same type of project at another school. That's why we like to keep those bond proposals general in roofs for elementary schools. And we named some, but if there's additional money, we will go to the next elementary school on the list. And likewise, we currently do that. We've had success with that. What we asked is, could we use those funds for earthquake? We did not ask them to use the funds for anything. If the school board, uh, thought that this would be a good idea to go and use those funds for anything we wanted, you could do that. We could vote to do that. However, you would not get the reimbursement money. So, I don't think it's a good economical thing to do. You'd have to pay 100% back, voters would, of the money whereby if you use it for things that are approved, like projects, and now earthquake, you would get the 60/40, which means we would pay 40%, our own taxpayers. So, that's really, um, that, that's a, good for our money. So, it wasn't, we have 12 million to spend wherever. I just, I received a few emails today about, "You have 12 million, why aren't you spending it on this?" I, I want to be clear that that 12 million was in relation to, um, similar projects. If there is a similar project in there, absolutely. We can continue to use it for 60/40, 70/30, depending on Deed's permission. We did have the commissioner's permission to, um, be able, to use that for earthquake. So, that, those are some differences and the nuances. And, um, it is nuanced because it is not, it is taxpayer money, it is the state money. It's, um, it, it really, there, there are a lot of government procedures behind this, the, these funds. That's why I want to be very clear, uh, about prior comments that we made. But, it's worth it, I think, to go back and use those funds. We will work with state, um, the municipality, as well as Deed, in, um, garnering those. Again, initially after earthquake, we did get, uh, verbal approval from Deed to, uh, have some flexibility with prior debt to be able to use it. Um, we have always had the ability, once again, to use prior debt on similar projects in the future. And this board has utilized that. So, um, seek, uh, productive use of unexpendanted funds to advocate facilities and, and programs. So, this is the, the same, um, question. That is exactly what we'd like to do, to just work to say and to figure out, how can we invest, uh, in Alaska's future? And Alaska's future, a lot of it is right here in ASD. And so, we would like to do that. Um, assist charter schools in financial planning and use of resources. We, uh, do have our, um, Darrell, along with our, our team, does assist charter schools. Uh, they, it is allowable to put a charter school school on a bond, absolutely, if, um, the board votes that way and the, and the voters could respond to that. Uh, but presently, in, um, any renewal as well as in seeking additional space. So, um, CITC has a plan right now. They're thinking about building a building. They'd love for Stream to go in it. So, there's, there are some negotiations and we participate in those negotiations to ensure, um, that the board policy and the best deal is given, uh, to those charter schools. And so, uh, that was just the policy and support. Um, this one for long-term leases. Uh, we, we presently do that, all charter school leases. And other school leases do fall under, um, the purview of our, um, CFO as well as Dave Whiting, to ensure that the contracts are, are really good contracts for our schools. Um, provide the status of Inlet View. This one would be timely for a consolidation of Inlet View. So, um, there is not an administrative recommendation for a consolidation of Inlet View. Um, when the bond, uh, proposition came up, um, the board discussed, uh, whether we are going to wait to invest in, um, building and re-modernizing buildings when the bond debt reimbursement comes back. That is in 2020, it's supposed to sunset. We're hoping to make a big push. It's one of our legislative priorities, to bring that bond debt, uh, allow it to sunset, the hiatus on it, let it come back so that, um, and although it comes back at 50/50, that would be a state match as well as a local match. Um, in that discussion at the board level, um, because of the IB program as well, I believe a discussion came up and said, "Are you looking at a middle school? Maybe looking at Central Middle School, um, as well as looking at a K8 program?" Those discussions came up. We had not reviewed those at the time with the schools and the principals. They were not part of the Western Demographics study. They were not part of our recommendations. But, we said, "Yes, we could do that. We, we will ask the principals." However, that meeting was set for the first week of December. An earthquake happened. That went on the back burner. We've never had that meeting. But, there was no plan. It was to go to the principals and say, "Hey, have your schools considered? Would you want to engage in something like this?" We haven't even had the discussion. And then, I mean, as the board knows, you're receiving, um, information from legislators that says, "We, we don't agree with the administrative recommendation," which there really isn't one. And there hasn't been one. So, I don't know. Um, it might've just been a miscommunication. The only thing I could think of is that, at this board level in a public comment, there was a question. Um, "We were moving Abbott Loop to a K8?" The question came up. "Does this school want to be K8?" And so, we hadn't asked. So, we decided to ask. And we hadn't asked yet because the meeting hasn't occurred. We will continue to ask. Um, from the feedback we received, it might not go over so well, but we'll continue to look for, um, solutions because we want investment in our schools. We want solid programs. And so, hence, uh, this came about, I think, just from a discussion. But, I haven't, there's nothing. So, the next one is also, "Consider suspension of Inlet View closure consolidation absent board approval." Um, I don't, again, the board did not approve or disapprove. I believe it was, uh, during the bond comments, that it, it came out, um, in relation to the IB, working with the middle school and Abbott Loop perhaps. But, it was a, I know that my charge was to go have a conversation. So, I charged my staff to say, "Hey, would you ask those principals to talk to the PTAs and see what they thought?" And then, but we never had it yet with, because of the, the meeting was canceled because there was an earthquake. So, um, and then, "Develop a more comprehensive and strategic assessment of opportunities and challenges for program facilities." Western Demographics was the start of this. Um, it, um, as mentioned tonight from, uh, Inlet View parents, uh, that, uh, several times Inlet View came up as somewhere to, um, save money if we closed Inlet View. And then, operational money it wouldn't, but it would if you didn't have to buy a bond. So, um, what we did for Western Demographics was to really work with the city, work with long-term planning, not in 2020, but 2040, and say, "Where is the growth?" Western Demographics came back to us and said, "I would not close Inlet View and I would not close Central. You will need those schools in the future." So, our recommendation to the board was around those types of things. Western Demographics did come up with a, um, a recommendation of a closed school and the board did act on that. But, the other items really went on hold because of now the new immediate priorities with, um, the earthquake and building damage. So, nothing is forgotten. Um, we, I believe that there is a 10-year plan for, uh, building. It does include two-year bonds that have schools on them. Um, at this time, though, I believe that the, the board, we passed a bond that spoke to major maintenance initially, waiting for, um, whether it's a, uh, everyone agreed with the decision or not. It was the decision of the board that we look for that to come back up. It is not going away in the six-year plan. Inlet View is still needed. Central is still a school that, in the future, we'll need. And Abbott Loop is still on the docket as a school also that needs modernization. Um, I hope the questions were answered. It was very quick review. Um, but these were, I just took some emails and then, um, my assistant assisted me in pulling out the questions to help give a, a broader picture of, of those. And, um, but they were very brief and I will do a, a more written, um, response as well. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board or comments? Mr. Holloman?
I do just want to make one quick comment. Uh, I think for a lot of board members, as our lives have gotten back to normal, we may forget that the staff is still consumed with the aftermath of the earthquake, that, that I'm, I'm guessing it's not all done and put away. We really appreciate the, the continued burden on top of everything else that's normally happening. Um, an awful lot of work continues to get done by folks and we do appreciate it.
Well said, Mr. Holloman. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda.
Uh, move to approve the consent agenda, ASD memorandum number 098, personnel report, and the note of 15, 2018 work session executive and irregular session minutes.
And, uh, do we have a vote?
Yes.
And the board may vote, please. So, the agenda, the consent agenda's been approved with seven yeas. So, at this time, I will read, uh, the, uh, statement on public testimony on action items. An action item memo is first introduced by the vice president and is seconded by another board member. I will open the floor for public testimony. If you have signed up in advance or indicate your interest in providing testimony, I will call you to come to the front table to speak. You have three minutes to talk and you will see a timer on the screen to your left to monitor the time remaining and inform you of when you need to conclude. After all testimony closes, I will open the floor for board discussion, followed by the student board representative vote before finally calling for the official vote. The voting results will be displayed on the screen to my right.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 095 and adopt the attached resolution in support of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, recognized this year on January 21st, 2019.
Is there any public testimony on this item? No public testimony. Is there any board discussion? No board discussion? Student vote?
Yes.
Members, please vote. And that motion passes unanimously with seven yeas.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 059 and authorize the superintendent to accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance for $223,092 over a three-year period to develop and implement a strategy for District-Wide School Threat Assessment Team Strategy.
Is there any public, uh, discussion on this memorandum 059? No public discussion? Is there any board discussion? Ms. Hildy?
Thank you. I was just wondering, is it a 223,000 each year for three years or, um, over three years? I couldn't tell by the budget summary.
Through, through the board, President, the, the amount is a total amount and it's spread out over time.
Any other board discuss, uh, discussion? Mr. Donley?
I just want to thank the staff that worked on obtaining this grant. It's great work. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion, questions, comments? All right. Student vote?
Yes.
Board members, please vote. That, um, resolution passes unanimously, uh, seven yeas.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 092 and authorize the superintendent to accept a sub-grant contract from the Cook Inlet Tribal Council for $223,73, $223,730 for the final year of a second order change project focusing on culturally responsive practices and adult socially-emotional learning in middle schools.
Is there any public testimony on memorandum 092? No public testimony. Is there any board discussion? Ms. Hildy?
It looks like a fabulous program. I'm just, it's the year five and I'm wondering if Fosini report on the success of the program or results based on it?
Dr. Bishop?
I'm sorry, I was answering another question. Wow, can you restate that?
No worries. I said, um, "It looks like a terrific program, but in the, it's in the fifth year of it." And I'm just wondering if Fosini, uh, results or, um, sharing of the success of the program?
Jenny, uh, and actually, we have a principal that does it now. Can you come up? I regret I wasn't tracking well. Sorry.
That's what happens when you stick around, Brandon.
Wendler's one of our schools that's involved in this. Um, actually, there is a third-party evaluator through CITC. So, they have been collecting data all along as we've been going on. So, we'll be able to provide a report at the end. So, we'll be able to provide a report at the end of this once they've submitted the results.
And I would add that, and I reported to you last winter on this, the work that we've been doing with Restorative Justice at Wendler, it's spreading throughout the district. We've already seen some tremendous results in our suspension rate reduction.
And through this grant, we'll be replicating that at two other schools.
And what schools are those?
Baggage and...
Roman, thank you. Thank you, appreciate it. Any other questions by the board? All right, thank you. So, is any other board discussion or comments? Okay, student vote, please?
Yes.
Board members, please vote. And that resolution passes unanimously with seven yeas.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 069, approving the International Baccalaureate Program that will begin at Inlet View Elementary to begin in the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Okay, and at this time, we do have a public testimony on this memorandum 069 and I would call up Lucas Gamble and Travis Stanton. And Lucas, you can begin when you see the timer to the left there.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Lucas. My daughter Lucy is a kindergartner at Inlet View Elementary. I'm testifying tonight in support of Principal Aaron's, the amazing staff and PTA at Inlet View's proposal to become an international baccalaureate world school, specifically the primary years program. It's uncommon for me to get excited about the inner workings of our educational system. However, being a parent of a bright student who's excited about learning motivates me. For that reason, I'd like to focus on two aspects of the IB primary years program. Firstly, inquiry-based education. In my view, too often, as a community, we rest on contempt before investigation. We make up our minds and take a position without asking basic questions that might otherwise lead to a different, more informed and more complete answer or thought. Arguably, this is undesirable side effect of a tremendous amount of content that comes to us each day. We're encouraged to arrive at a conclusion or land on a solution quickly without being mindful. Sometimes, this can create a problem. Perhaps, we can thwart this tendency by steering from content-based framework towards concept-based learning and inquiry-based education. I hate to lean on our kids too much to turn this problem around without providing them a tool to do so, so perhaps, for the betterment of our children, we move towards enriching the learning experience by nourishing curiosity, encouraging a relentless thirst for investigation. I am genuinely excited about the IB approach. It's my perspective that it provokes an open-ended invitation for exploration and self-discovery. Professionally, I'm a scientist. I know how gratifying it is to arrive at a thoughtful solution. It's got to be incredibly powerful for a young learner. Secondly, we live in a great community. We have a beautifully diverse and highly integrated school district. It seems obvious that we move towards a way of learning that promotes this incredible asset. Why not create an environment that embraces a global perspective by formally teaching tolerance and diversity, ultimately leading towards a more caring and thoughtful community? In my view, the IB program exemplifies this very thing. Lastly, I'm impressed by the dedication and enthusiasm of the Inlet View staff. Nobody likes extra work. I know personally, as my wife teaches at Inlet View, the extreme effort Principal Aaron's and the staff put towards advancing this proposal. I'd encourage the board to capitalize on this energy and use it as a model for other elementary schools. As a parent, it brings me comfort to know that the teachers at Inlet View care enough to go beyond the required duties to provide a better learning opportunity for my daughter and her peers. I engaged in my own inquiry-based investigation of the IB PYP program. If you ask my wife, I'm often a tough customer. However, I'm convinced that this program is best for Inlet View. I assume, because this vote's been delayed more than once, that the board has also done their own inquiry-based investigation of the IB PYP program. Thus, I implore you to vote yes on this proposal.
Thank you for your testimony.
Good evening. My name is Travis Stanton and I'm a fifth, sixth grade teacher at Inlet View Elementary. And I'm excited tonight to give you my perspective on the IB primary years program. I was first introduced to the program last spring when I had the opportunity to attend an IB training in California. I was inspired by other teachers and districts that have adopted the program. Talking to a teacher that had been in the program for a couple of years, her excitement for the framework that it provides and successes she has seen helped to convince me that this is something I should stand up and take note of. She said it has been some of the hardest work she's done, but she also said it was some of the most rewarding. At the conference, there was a definite synergy that was electric. There was an excitement for education and learning that I've not seen in a very long time. Just listening to the other teachers' successes, I can see why entire districts have adopted this program. I've had the opportunity to play around a little bit with the PYP program and implement some of the units of inquiry in my classroom. I've seen students engaged and eager to do their own research and in return, be rewarded with meaningful learning experiences. One such example is an, is an ancestor project that, that we did as a class that tied into our very first lesson of unit one, week one of the Cengage fifth-grade curriculum that was just recently adopted this year. The unit was U.S. Immigration. The lesson was focused on coming to America. The central theme of what the lesson ties in, it tied in really nicely to the, the two units of inquiry, who we are and where we are in place and time. For our project, students had to investigate an ancestor in their family that was at least 90 years or older. I got a lot of feedback, not only from students that enjoyed the project, but parents as well. It was really neat to see students connect to their family's heritage and past. It was meaningful learning. Many of the students learned things about their families that they never knew before and it gave them a connection that they could directly relate back to the theme of our textbook. In using the new Cengage curriculum, Reach for Reading, in unison with the PYP, it gives me the autonomy, not only to teach the standards, but to go beyond the classroom experiences as students take their learning outside the school. Most importantly, the PYP framework offers students and teachers the much-needed component of student agency, which means developing student choice, voice, and ownership of their learning within the curriculum provided by ASD. Engagement is critical for student success and for this reason, I hope you approve our proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could have Julie Thatch and Julie Lucky? Got it right this time.
Hi, I'm Julie Thatch and I'm a first grade teacher at Inlet View Elementary. The International Baccalaureate Program is a rigorous, globally-minded way of educating young minds. As you can see this evening, we have represented a multitude of cultures and countries from around the world and it's exciting to not only experience the joy of exploring other cultures, but to bring that excitement to young minds. When I was in high school, my history teacher was very rote in his teaching of history, of American history, world history. I wasn't very interested in history and would never tell my students that, but that was my experience. As an adult, I love history because I explore the world. Travel is my greatest passion and I like to bring that to my six and seven-year-old students. They're shown the Eiffel Tower in a way that they may not have otherwise thought of and now they want to go visit it. They're exploring places that they had never even considered, ones that I hadn't considered when I was their age, but now they're passionate about it and they're wanting to be enthused about, to explore the world. So, this program lines up perfectly with creating enthusiastically educated students. My first graders' careers have likely not yet been created, but what we do know is the skills they will need to be successful. The number one skill they will need is problem solving and the IB approach centers around that. Students explore, research, decide, question, and create. An IB unit in action could be that the children read about pumpkins. That can be used from the Cengage curriculum. Then they see and touch a real pumpkin. We did this. At first, the children were disgusted by the pumpkin. They didn't want to stick their hands in it. And as soon as they did, the joy was electrifying. They were so engaged in it. And we dug out the pumpkin seeds. They estimated how, or first estimated how many would be in each pumpkin. In, very interested in how their pumpkin seed count would compare with other table groups, which led to discussion, intellectual discussion among peers. They researched climates where pumpkins might best be able to grow. How much does it cost to buy a pumpkin? So, math, science, meteorology, all different subjects that we studied. They had the opportunity to write what they hoped to do with the pumpkin when we're done. Predict the, the seeds, as I said, harvest the, the pumpkin seeds at the end. They counted them. They wrote about how the inside of a pumpkin feels. Bringing concepts to life enhances learning. At the end of each week, it's astonishing to see little six and seven-year-olds reflect upon their learning. They self-analyze. Did I try my best this week? Do I need to work harder next week? This week, I learned about blank. This methodology truly develops 21st century learners and I am very excited about the opportunity of teaching the IB way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Julie, when you see the clock there?
Again, for the record, my name is Julie Lucky and I'm testifying as the president of the Inlet View Elementary PTA today. I just wanted to reaffirm the parent support for the IB PYP program. The parents feel that the IB perspective fits the culture of Inlet View Elementary. When surveyed, foreign language was one of the number one requests of parents and that was before we were even thinking about doing IB, but the more we learn about it, the more we feel it fits with the culture that we have at our school. There has been overwhelming support both in the surveys that the PTA has done and also consistent support during our PTA meetings. The PTA, as you know, has committed to raise funds for teacher training through a dedicated, successful fundraiser. We also did that train, we sent Mrs. Thatch and a couple of other teachers to training this year, even though we weren't sure if the IB program would be supported by the board. So, we are committed to, to the training and the program. Individual parents, in addition to the money that we made through our fundraiser for training, individual parents donated money and miles to get the teachers to the training. And that, as I said, that was even before the IB program was in front of the board. So, I just wanted to reaffirm that the parents do support the IB program. The PTA is committed to support the IB program, both this year during the application process and while it is in place. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could have Patricia Aaron's and Byron McClellan? Brian, sorry.
Good evening and for the record, my name is Patricia Aaron's and I'm the current principal at Inlet View Elementary. First of all, I would like to take a few seconds to thank the board members for the time and consideration that you have put into the IB initiative that we have been presenting since September. I understand the responsibility of your position and certainly, I admire your commitment to represent Anchorage community's beliefs and values and to shoulder the responsibility for preparing children to live productive and satisfying lives. I hope my testimony today will help clarify some of your questions and concerns regarding this proposal. Community and parent support, as you heard previously from my PTA president, although IB initiative was born the summer of 2017 by the school administration and the faculty, the IB community, PTA, and the entire school body fully support IB. This can be confirmed in the document that contains more than 120 signatures, a letter of support from the PTA board, public testimony from teachers and parents during previous board meetings, and tonight's presence. Investment. When it comes to education, there's always concerns about funding. Inlet View PTA and faculty have expressed a commitment to cover the cost of the professional development necessary to maintain the quality of the program. The annual fee required by the IB organization for the PYP primary years program is less compared to the amount the district already pays for the diploma program over at West High. Both costs are small compared to the benefits of providing an international education in ASD. We all know we are one of the most internationally diverse districts in the nation. Language teacher and IB coordinator positions are a one-time and permanent staff allocation. Contrary to immersion schools that require one teacher for the target language, every year of the school grows. There will be no additional cost for textbooks for the program. IB is a teaching framework, a philosophy, not a curriculum or program. Can we do IB in the current building? Yes, we can. Like you heard before, teachers have been incorporating IB language in their daily practices and also, they have been using the Reach for Reading materials and making connections with the six transdisciplinary themes that IB supports. Students moving to and from Inlet View to other schools. Because of the nature of IB framework, teachers will continue to use ASD reading materials and teach to the Alaska State standards. Any student wanting to transfer to or from Inlet View into a general educational classroom within the district will be able to do smoothly. Finally, I would like to finish by thanking all the considerations supporting IB initiative for our school. This might be the start of a fully K-12 international education for our students and families in ASD. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, is Forrest your son?
Yes, he's my son.
You want to, want him to come up with you?
Okay.
Not that you need it Forrest, but you kind of like that support, I'm sure.
Yeah, I need the support. Good evening, I'm Brian McClellan. I'm the father of two ASD students. One, Forrest, is a fifth grade, fifth grader at Inlet View Elementary and I have a seventh grader at Roman. I'm here to express my support for starting the IB program at Inlet View and I wanted to share a little bit about our family's experience in the IB program. Both, both of my children were born here in Anchorage, but when they were pretty young, we had a opportunity to go live and work in other cul, in other cultures across, across overseas. We were first in Azerbaijan and then in Norway. We were gone for about seven years over there and both, both countries, we were in, the kids were in the IB, IB schools over there. Honestly, I was a little bit nervous at first that, because I didn't know what the IB program was. I was worried, had a few concerns, worried about whether they would, how they would integrate when they came back into the U.S. school system. Would they be behind perhaps other school, other students that had been, had strict, you know, kind of learning requirements each year because it seemed a little bit more loose with how they, what they learned, exactly what they learned because a lot of it was led, you know, helped self-directed. They were able to kind of learn a little bit about what they were interested in. But after a year or two, I've, in the program, I became a huge supporter of it. I really loved to see the, the philosophy and see it in my kids, see the results and how they were confident learners, they were inquisitive, they would, if they were interested in something, they would just go learn about it, find out about it, ask questions and research it on their own. And they're confident to take risks in, in front of the class and ask questions, express their opinions. And so, I really was impressed with it and one of the things I really liked about it was just the global view, you know, they were, they were learning a lot about the world and not so much just about United States and local, although I'm sure that will still be a focus in, in the program here, but the, they learned a lot more about just different cultures and appreciated different cultures and, you know, adding the language component into it. I really liked that. And when we finally came back, two years ago, 2016, two and a half years ago, years ago, we came back and I was really worried about how they would integrate, but they, they, when they got into school, they were actually a little bit, a little bit bored. They, they felt like it was pretty, really easy for them and they almost felt like they repeated their first year back here because they, they, they weren't behind. They were, I thought they were actually ahead of the curve, so. Yeah, so I was really impressed and I hope that we can, we can do that again.
Thank you. Forrest, when you see the clock over there, you can begin, okay?
Hi, my name is Forrest McLean. I go to Inlet View Elementary and I'm 10 years old. I'm in fifth grade and I have a brother who is, who is currently in seventh grade. Before moving to Alaska, my family and I lived in Norway. In Norway, I attended an IB school for kindergarten, first, and second grade and I would like to share... and I would like to share with you the things I really liked about the IB school. When I moved to Inlet View, I found it difficult to get used to the environment and make friends. One thing that I found easier was finding my way around the school. What I remember the most from Norway was that we had three recesses. One in the morning, one after lunch, and one at the end of the day. And to tell you the truth, when I found out that Inlet View only had one recess, I was kind of disappointed. In the classroom in Norway, we started out our day by asking a lot of questions related to a big idea. We had the opportunity to ask a lot of questions, and the teacher helped us find the answers. Also, the teacher wasn't talking about the lesson all the time, but instead they were helping other students. Our math classes were integrated with other topics. For example, we learned about money when we talked about the economy in Norway and other countries. We were also able to do math at federal level. Some ways that they taught differently is that they let us talk during assignments, and they weren't always talking about one subject, but more of what we've been doing for the next month or so. Social studies was also a lot different because we studied pretty much the entire world's history instead of just our country's history. There were people from all over the world there. There was also a lot of classes for different languages, like Norwegian and Spanish and Russian, and even English for people who didn't understand it. I also liked that I had the opportunity to read books that I was interested in, and then I was able to write reports about what I read. Usually, we read about information that would help us find the answers to our questions. The teacher was always telling us that we were risk-takers, knowledgeable, and peacemakers capable of making this a better world. Now, this is why I'm here tonight. I would like to ask you, board members, to support my Inlet View school to become an IB elementary school. And this is why. I want every kid at Inlet View to be able to ask more questions and do more research about topics that they are interested in. I want every kid to experience what I experienced at my IB school in Norway. And finally, I would like to be able to do IB in sixth grade next year. I personally think IB is a good fit for our school because I think the students would like it a lot, and I think they could do community work, research projects, and presentations to other classes and parents. Most importantly, I would like to ask you to approve IB for Inlet View so all next generations can be better citizens, engaged in school, and become active members of our Anchorage community. Thank you so much for your attention tonight, and I look forward to starting my next school year attending the new Inlet View IB World School.
Thank you. And if we could have James Hulker and Beth Daly gamble. And James, when you're ready, you can begin.
Thank you, board, for the opportunity to address you this evening. As I mentioned earlier, my name is James Hulker, and I have a first grader at Inlet View. So I'm really, when we got to Inlet View, one of the things that we were most disappointed to leave behind in making our choice was a language. That's just one of many reasons why the IB program is very exciting to my family and our daughter, the opportunity to have language instruction. Another reason we're excited about the IB Primary Years Program is that it's inclusive to the school. It's an inclusive program for the entire neighborhood school. A lot of those programs throughout the ASD district are schools within a school. We purposely wanted to be a part of a cohesive school and have the school integrated into whatever program our daughter was going to attend. The IB program has the backing of all the parents that I've spoken to, all of my co-parents at Inlet View, the teachers, the staff. Everyone's excited about it. The staff and the administration at the school is behind the program. They're putting in tons of time into it. I know through that that it will be a success. One thing, based on my profession, I'm a scientist and a former university faculty member. When I look at this, when I think back of my students that I interact with at the university level, the students that were focused on learning and asking questions, those students often, and I'm not saying you can't do both, but the students that were successful at the university and graduate level were the ones that were asking questions, even if they didn't have the most technical students. Now, the best students could be, are both. But the opportunity to nurture the desire to learn that the IB program offers is highly attractive. And I endorse, as a parent, the formation of Inlet View as an IB program, and I hope you take this into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Beth, you can begin when you see.
I'm Beth, and you've heard me talk before. I'm a fourth-grade teacher and a parent at Inlet View. I'm also the future IB coach. We are a tight-knit community school with highly, highly involved and supportive families there. And we're ready. We're ready to connect the Anchorage School District with the highly-regarded International Primary Years Program. We're ready to implement the IB philosophy and be certified as an IB school. We're ready to build stronger, more driven lifelong learners in our community. This is my 16th year teaching, nine of which have been at Inlet View, and it's my first year as an Inlet View parent. I intend to stay at Inlet View for my entire career, if they let me. I believe in the best for our school and for our families. Many teachers in our school, as you've heard, as you have heard, me included, have already been implementing parts of the IB framework in our classrooms. Students are engaged, they're excited, they're motivated, they're intrigued, and they're more inquisitive. So therefore, they're more interested in what they're learning, and therefore, they remember it and they apply it. So far, I've attended two IB conferences, one as a classroom teacher and another as an IB coach. I'm incredibly motivated and excited to start creating and collaborating with these lovely teachers we have in our school and the students. I'm excited to share what I've learned and help students become more connected to their own learning through IB. With your approval, we can become a PYP-certificated school, the first in our state. With your approval, our school district will officially have a connection to a fast, fast-growing Primary Years International Program. With your approval, we will facilitate more connections for our students and support students' inquiry and active learning through this framework of IB. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, both. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this action item? Yes, sir. And if you could state your name, please, when you get up there.
Good evening, board. My name is Jonathan Halpern, and I am a current parent of a fifth grader at Inlet View and also an Inlet View PTA member. I also have a son who attends stellar as a ninth grader. And I want to give my very strong and vigorous support of the IB program, which I think is a perfect fit for our community for the many reasons that have been stated this evening. But just the idea that when children are in elementary school, they are often uninhibited learners. And the IB program that Principal Ehrens has such experience with in another district and the teachers that have trained and have gotten the training in to be prepared for it is going to create the learners that will be prepared to handle the challenges of the 21st century because they're going to be problem solvers, they're going to be creative thinkers, they're going to be divergent thinkers. And there's a film that's been popular in the last couple of years called "Most Likely to Succeed." And it mostly addresses secondary students and their kind of learning and what goes on there. But what really happens is in the early years, when the children are in elementary school, where they get really excited about problem solving, where they start to think about careers. And with the experiential learning that can occur in an IB program, this will help foster students who will be prepared to handle the challenges of the 21st century and make our state and our country and our world a better place to be. So thank you for considering supporting our program, and thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Could you spell your name for me?
Sure. It's Halpern, H-A-L-P as in Peter, E-R-N. And my first name is Jonathan.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify at this time? Okay, I'll open it up to board discussion. Mr. Holloman?
Yeah. Partway through all the testimony, one of the things that struck me is there's been an awful lot of work done by staff at the school in preparation for this. As a big district, and I think as you get oriented to this building, there's a tendency for the board and the administration to think in terms of a centrally planned district where decisions get made here and pushed out to all the buildings. And it strikes me that this is something being done in a building. It's an awesome program. I don't, I know a few people that actually have objections to IB, but I don't think they're rational objections. I think it's an awesome program. I think we have a responsibility to encourage this, to remove barriers. It's at a stage where they have to have our permission to go forward as a district unless there was a compelling reason not to grant that permission and let this grow. I think we have a responsibility to do it. Thank you.
Ms. Hulting?
Yeah, the work between the school, staff, and parents is commendable, and just what you want to see, right? It's just how it should work, and that's how kids win when we have that kind of collaboration. They've also been very responsive to board requests on the financial impact of it and come back and given a revised budget. That would still allow them to do the IB program, but just kind of the skinniest budget possible. If I have to vote today, I don't think I can vote to support it because of the financial implication, though, despite their hard work. But what I am inclined to consider, and with a little bit of hesitation, is tabling the vote until after the legislative session. Increasing programs is part of our legislative priorities. We've had legislative interest in supporting this program. And until we have a clearer picture of what our budget will look like and how many teacher positions we will or likely be cutting, I don't see how I can add one, essentially one FTE, until I have a clearer picture of that. So my preference would be not to vote today. But I'm not quite sure, and I'd like to hear what other board members think.
Any other board members like to speak? Mr. Donlin?
I have a couple of questions for the superintendent. First of all, do we have any other elementary schools, for the elementary grades in those schools that have a designated half-time language teacher?
I'd have to research. We may in a charter school, but I don't think, as an, we have immersion programs, but that is part of their collaboration. There isn't additional staffing.
And they all have a lottery option to them, right?
Correct.
Yeah. My second question is, how much would it cost us? Because just less than half of this proposal, much less than half, is a half-time teacher to teach languages. How much would it cost us to add a half-time language teacher to every one of our elementary schools? Which I think would be a great idea if we could afford it.
Every one of our elementary schools? I think, yeah, 40. What is that?
20.
3 million, yeah, half of. I thought a full-time would be over 6, so about 3. We could, may I ask questions? Because I had, we do, just so the board knows, encourage, to Mr. Holloman's point, some innovative thinking and organization. And we have presently about three other schools for which we're working that want to make some adjustments in their staffing that they're provided to do innovative programs. And we have approved one this year, and it's in Eagle River. And I was suggesting, Principal Ehrens, would you mind coming up? I had suggested, and this, I'm not talking about people or jobs, I'm just talking about positions because you could get very sticky if we talk about people. But have you considered one of these part-time positions? I think we had a conversation, maybe perhaps doing a half-time librarian, half-time this, or half-time something that your building always has to be able to be flexible with that, to bring the cost down? I think the cost was brought down already, and I was just wondering if you could address that.
Yeah, we initially, our proposal was to have one full-time for Spanish language and one full-time for the IB coach. However, in talking to our staff, and like I said before, because of the nature of the program, the IB organization requires a liaison between the organization and the school. So the principal cannot fulfill those jobs as the PYP coordinator. So in looking at our numbers and our classrooms and the minimum that we could be able to do that, that's when we reduced that full-time to a .5 for the IB coordinator. And for the language, it was about the same case. We have 10 classrooms, and if we think about, like, adding the same time allocation, that art and health, that's what we have, which is .5.
That's what I meant, too. So I didn't want to just say librarian, but art and health, just some flexibility.
Yes. So when we talked about the librarian and maybe talking about health or something, that was something that I discussed with some of my staff members, and we won't be able to do that. Our librarian also, it's already using a lot of her time doing extended librarian time, library time. She's also doing interventions for our wing, with our wing groups. So her time is already, you know, well-being utilized. And in talking about the health curriculum, that will be something that the teachers will have to do. So trying to include the health curriculum into already six transdisciplinary themes, that will be very difficult. So that was something that we looked at that, but it was not feasible for the program.
Those are some of the other options that other schools are using to just have some innovative programs. So I was just wondering, I know we had that conversation, but I didn't know the extent of the research with it. So thank you.
We looked at all the possible options, and the .5 for each was like the very minimum that we request. Thank you.
I think that you told us this already, and I apologize for asking this again. Were you planning to roll this out for the first two or three grades initially, or will it go school-wide in the fall?
School-wide in the fall.
That was what I thought. Thank you.
Ms. Foster?
I'd like to take the opportunity to speak in favor of the program. And I probably bring to bear maybe a slightly different perspective, having been the CFO, working on the project implementation at Roaming that did not get followed through. But looking at the value proposition at that point in time, it looked like a good investment for the district, and the next step would have been to roll it down into Inlet View or some other elementary feeder program. So based on that experience and that investigation, it strikes me as it's a high-value program for the students, and it's particularly high-valued for the students that graduate with the certificate, and it enables them to go on to other places that they otherwise wouldn't have without that certificate. So it really is a program where the certificate is of great value for them seeking not just post-secondary education, but opportunities internationally. And given our location and the nature of our economy, I do think it's worth considering the value proposition, not just the cost. I think there's a great value for the student body. I understand there's some nervousness about equity issues, but I do but I do think this is a program that's worth your consideration. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell?
So, I, my son did IB courses at West. He did not complete the diploma, but I know many students who completed the diploma got college credit for it. It's a wonderful program. I absolutely love the IB philosophy. I love, I really feel strongly that our neighborhood schools, it's very important to support programs within our neighborhood schools. I think our charter schools and our optional schools are wonderful, but when we lose families from our neighborhood schools, it does weaken the neighborhoods. So, I really applaud Inlet View for coming up with this. You know, it just is clear that the community is very passionate about this. I like that it's going to be school-wide. I was so excited when we approved Campbell to be a science school, Campbell Elementary. The cost for that program was significantly lower. So, that was, you know, it was much, much easier to do, but it was the same type of enthusiasm where it started with the teachers and the principal and then the families got engaged. And they realized that it did make sense to make it school-wide and not a school within a school kind of program. I agree with Member Donnelly that if we could take, in an ideal world, I think we should have a world language starting in kindergarten for every school in the district. I think that's critical. We, the world is becoming flatter and particularly where we live. I think that would be fabulous. I really like that part of it. I, you know, the inquiry-led, cross-curricular approach is fantastic. There's really, there's really nothing that I don't like about this. The issue to me is the cost and as Member Foster said, it is an investment. We are looking to communicate to our legislators that we are making innovative changes within the district and this would certainly fall into that area. It is a, you know, the ticking point for me is strictly the cost. And I wonder, and I apologize for asking this question now versus the last time that you were here, but, you know, I know that we, at the last board meeting, we approved the French immersion program and they spent twelve years looking for grants, raising money. I assume you've explored whether there are grants available, either domestically or internationally for this type of a program? And there was nothing out there that you were able to find? You know, I just, it's, it's, in a district where we have had to make cuts to our world language teachers on the secondary level, over the past five or six years, we're probably twelve or thirteen percent down on world language teachers and our students don't have as much access to that on the secondary level. It's, you know, I think they're investments that we have to make district-wide and so that's the piece that I'm grappling with and I really am not sure. It would make me so happy if you came back in a month and said, "We found a grant, we can cover half of this." And I know that that's unrealistic, so it's something I'm going to have to just grapple with as we're talking about this. But I really, really, really am grateful to you all for having the energy and the passion around our children's learning, because this is what we would love every single elementary, every single school to have in the district.
Ms. Hilding?
Thank you. Principal Erns, if we didn't have a decision until after the end of the legislative session, hopefully by June, would, and we were somehow able to align our budget differently to support this program, would that be enough time for you to implement for this fall?
Excuse me, did you say that the legislature, it's in June?
Well, I don't know. Let's say by June, we, you know, if I were to ask to table this tonight, until we have a better picture of our budget, until we see what teacher positions we have to possibly cut across our district, and I certainly don't mean that as a promise, but, and then the legislators have had a time to meet and consider how they want to spend money, would that be too late for implementing in the fall?
I understand the timeframe. So, when we thought about presenting this to the district and then to the board, that was basically like September last year. So, I know that it has been, you know, moved to, until now. And my concern is that the IB organization opens up the applications for candidate schools in February. So, that is our timeline in order for us to complete the whole application process with the organization and have those conversations with them and showing them that we are ready, that we have the support so we can start the school year 2019, 2020. The deadline is February, so we are running out of time. I'm sorry.
So, I guess I would say as a board member, I don't even think it's fair to ask you that because you guys have been so patient with us as it is. Legislative is going to be what legislative is. I don't foresee a big windfall in the future. And I think when I read this, I get excited because I think it's something that we're looking at innovative things at our schools. And elementary school, I think, is where we're lacking. And to have a neighborhood school implement something like this, I think it's just, it's where we want to be. And so, my recommendation is that we talk this up tonight and that we take a vote tonight and that hopefully we can pass this because it is the right thing to do for our students. I understand the financial constraints, but there will always be financial constraints.
Thank you.
Yes?
I guess I'd like to hear what the super, if the superintendent has a recommendation, one way or the other.
Madam President, to the President, to the Vice President, of course, the, I mean, who wouldn't like it? I love it. It's a great, it is an investment in our school district. I think that the outcomes are solid. It is a budget decision that the board is present to make.
Mr. Donnelly?
I agree with all the supporters of this program. I mean, I think, and it's really cool how the parents got together and worked on it. The only question is the money and equity and fairness across the entire district. I think every elementary school would love to have an additional staff person and I think they would have very creative and wonderful ways to utilize that additional staff person. But we're not voting on that. This is essentially a budget vote for next year and we're looking at a $10 million deficit right now for next year that we don't seem to have a single plan for dealing with. Not one real concrete proposal that this board has adopted to address that $10 million deficit. If we're going to start adding additional staff to individual schools, no matter what the merits are, well, a good idea. I'm not contesting the merits of this idea. If this was a net zero on dollars, I'm 100% on board. Especially given all the work that the parents have done and the commitment here. It's just what you want from a school, to have that involvement. But we've got Title I schools that have special resources and so they have additional staff. But we've got a ton of schools that don't qualify for Title I additional funding. So, we have a standard that we've adopted as a school district for what staffing they get. They don't get any extra money. No matter what their needs are, they don't get extra money. No matter what kind of great ideas they bring forward to how to use an additional staff person, they don't get extra money. The only budget votes that I've seen us really make since I've been here are things to try to produce equity. When we worked on, when we thought about additional counselors, it was to bring equity to the system so that every child would have access to a counselor. We didn't just say, "We're going to add a counselor to just one school." We adopted a policy saying all middle schools should at least have access to, students should have access to a counselor. We didn't pick out one elementary school that currently doesn't have a counselor and add it at that elementary school. As a board, we were talking about what we want to do next year. We said we want to try to get counseling access for all our elementary students. I don't know what I can explain to those other non-Title I schools why just one individual school should get extra resources when they may have, actually, we haven't done any assessment here. Is there a greater need out there for this $150,000 a year or so from one of our other schools? We don't know that. We don't have that information before us. I think we ought to have that information before we make a decision like this because this is essentially a budget vote for next year's budget. And until we are not looking to the abyss of $10 million and potentially major reductions to instructors and increasing class sizes, because I still don't know how we're going to close that gap right now, I just don't think that this is a timely proposal. Now, if there was a grant or something else that made it a revenue-neutral proposal, I think it'd be great because I think this has really got a lot of merit. But what we're looking at here is if we spread this out, this equal amount to each one of our other elementary schools, we'd be looking over $6 million a year. I mean, and that would be the fair thing to do here because every one of those schools has some incredibly great need. We know they do. It might be at those schools, a counselor is desperately needed because there's some crisis going on at that school, socioeconomic crisis. There might be some really wonderful opportunity to have some other sort of special instruction at an individual school that our Title I schools get to make those kind of decisions, where they could put that resources to the best use. But it's just very, very hard to explain to the other schools in the district why one school would get extra resources and they won't. When we haven't even done any analysis of what school is in the most desperate situation for additional resources right now.
Have any other schools brought up the IB program? Like have any other schools looked into it for them? Or is Inlet View the only one?
Inlet's the only one that I know of.
Through the President, to our student. Since I have been President, Emily, this is the only one that I've known of. But there, obviously, we had a comment in regard to West and then growing Wests to Romig and then to elementary. But did they select an elementary school at the time? No. And consequently, initially, a few years ago, we were concerned because of West High program not growing, but actually, as of recent, our last couple of years, I think Dr. Johnson told me it's quadrupled in the number of students who want to do a certificate. So, it was about 10 and it's greater now at the high school level. So, if you're curious about how it's working out, it's actually growing at the high school level within the last two years.
Yes, Ms. Hilding?
Thank you. There's no doubt that this is an excellent program, just the right kind of program for our district, fits in with the kind of students who move in and out and frankly, just an excellent way for students to learn and develop and grow. If it is not voted for today, I would like to keep it as a priority, talk the list if the funds become available because this is the kind of thing that our, you know, families want and support. But again, I don't have the financial, I can't make sense of it financially to vote for it today.
Ms. Donnelly?
Okay. Trying to interpret my post in here. Having come from a charter school where, you know, there's the APC and the staff, the principal, and then you've got the district out here, it takes a lot of intense, you know, collaboration and working together for charter schools to work. We saw that with the French immersion program and everything that they did, you know, to bring that up to bear to us. We're seeing it at Inlet View. A lot of reasons that you don't see more programs happen, you know, is because you don't always have one component of that buy-in, whether it's the community or it's the staff buy-in or it's the principal that doesn't want to manage the program. There's a lot of different components. And right now, what I see, a lot like the French immersion program, they have it all together and that is a rare opportunity, you know, from what I've seen. This isn't just about a halftime language teacher. This is about a complete program. It's so much bigger than that. And would a halftime, you know, language teacher at every elementary school be really cool? Yeah, I don't know that they all want it. I don't think we should be, you know, shoving things down schools' throats if they don't want it. And so, they've come and they've brought this and I'm just, I'm really impressed. This is a dollar amount that's, I would take it out of savings if need be because I do think it has that kind of value for children. That's not just, you know, one end or the other. This is going to take them somewhere. And I think probably my favorite one, if I was on the edge and on the fence, Forrest. He really hit the mark with me tonight. And so, I am in support of the program tonight and I hope that we can find a way to make it work. And I also think that if this is one of our things for our legislators, leading by example and putting our money where our mouth is, not just saying, "We'll only be innovative if you fund it." You know, there's got to be, and this isn't a big amount. And so, I think that's probably my argument for it.
Ms. Mitchell?
So, Elisa, does that mean you're going to go to Juneau and present this as one of our innovative programs when we talk to our legislators?
Yeah, I believe I'm scheduled to go down into February.
Yes, she is.
My first trip to Juneau.
So, and I just want to speak on what Mr. Donnelly said about the equity issue. And I do understand that and I probably more so than a lot of people understand our Title I schools and their struggles. However, it's not any different than what special programs are at East or West or anywhere else. And I think this is an opportunity for, I mean, I get excited when I hear about the type of learning that's taking place and students are asking questions and exploring. I know my own five, grade five grandson at Bear Valley gets bored and he would love this program. Too bad I couldn't talk him into transferring. But anyway, I, boy, I just think we have such an opportunity here and we have a group that is on board. They thought this out. It's going to work. It might not necessarily work at every school and I think we have to take it school by school when schools come to us and ask for these type of programs and innovation. And again, I know it doesn't sound like, I don't want to underemphasize the funds, but $138,000 a year is what has been proposed to us for the next two years. I didn't see a third year on there, but I take it out of savings. I think it's a worthwhile venture. I'm going to be voting yes.
Is there any other board discussion?
Don't everybody raise their hand a once. Okay, Mr. Don, we'll let Mr. Donnelly go first and then you, Elisa.
Okay. I just want you all to think about what happens when the next school comes and asks us for something that's different than what we have as a standard for our elementary schools and they present a good case for it. That's what we're, we're going to set the standard here tonight. And if the standard is a case-by-case analysis, well, then that's fair. But then we're, every other school in the district's entitled to that and not to be told that this is all you get because for years, they've been told, "This is what you get." And some of them have gotten a lot less than others, actually. And we've said no because, to anything additional, no matter what the merits of it were, because that is what they got. Now, if you want to change that policy, well, we can do that tonight. But I certainly hope that if we do, if some other school comes and presents a good case for why they need a halftime person for, for, for teaching languages because their parents, their PTA supports it. Or they say, "We have a special opportunity to do a particular sports program that it's really going to make a difference for our kid's future." That we consider that and give it fair treatment and not say ever again, "No, we're not going to consider that because nobody else gets that." That's what we're doing here tonight. And I appreciate this opportunity to do a really cool program. And if we found a way that, that it wasn't, you know, if the school could absorb the cost within the school, I'd be 100% on board. Or if they had done what the French immersion folks had done and gone out and found full funding so that it wasn't, didn't require any additional school resources, I would give them full credit for that and say they're entitled to have this program. But we have to realize we're setting a different standard for the future tonight if we go along with this dollar amount. I'm willing to even approve this. I'm willing to even approve this, this program with the caveat that, you know, that if they came up with the grants, just like the French immersion people did after a decade of working on it, that would be fine. I might even go along with this if we make the commitment to all the other schools, that we would give them the same amount of money, elementary schools out there that may have what may be greater needs. That's what's really missing in this decision. There's been no analysis, school by school analysis, of whether there is a greater need out there at any other individual school to invest this money in there. If I could be convinced there was no other school in the district that didn't have a greater need of this, that would even be very persuasive to me. But I haven't heard anything, anybody argue that's true. So just remember what we're doing tonight if we do adopt this, that we've got to treat everybody fairly and equally in the school district. And if we do this, then we can no longer say, "That's all you get because that's the rule." Because the rule is gone, it's out the door.
Ms. Hilding and then Ms. Foster.
Thank you. Well, I'll just say I found Member Snellie's argument very persuasive. I think it is a big-ish deal when you get all of those people aligned and on board. If I were going to set one goal for a school in our district, it would be for educators and parents to be united in how, in teaching kids. I think the value of that is exceptional. It's just what we want to see. As far as the equity aspect, we do have programs that cost money in our district at some schools that other schools don't have. We already have that, I don't want to start listing some, but there are special programs at other schools. So I don't think that this is a deviation from it. If I had 40 elementary schools show up tomorrow with this tremendous educator-parent collaboration saying, "We want to do this awesome thing," then I would hope that we would be thrilled and excited and look for ways to support it. I heard ways to support it. We've talked about presenting what our needs are and I think that was a compelling argument as well. So I think I'm, I think I'm swayed.
Ms. Foster?
I'm done talking and ready to vote.
Are board members, no further discussion? All right, student vote, please.
Yes.
Members, please vote.
My computer turned itself off.
I know, mine did too.
Me too.
That's why I always carry a spare. Had to log in on a different one. Windows is getting my desktop running.
Am I on screen?
This is your fault.
Am I on? No.
Mark, Dave, and Dina. Are you signing Michael?
Any comments? What's more, we can, it's like, yeah.
You can't? You can't get through, Mark? Okay. Just. Yeah, I can do a thumbs up or.
Can you do a pop-up, please? I'm, yeah, I got it, okay.
Okay, done.
Okay. And that motion passes with five yays and two nays. Congratulations.
Congratulations, good job. She did a good job.
Yeah, they did a great job.
You did a great job.
Congratulations.
I look forward to visiting you next year. At this time, we have non-action items. Is there any non-action item that a board member would like to pull? Yes?
The one I moved to add to the agenda.
On the discussion?
On salaries.
We'll just discuss that, okay. Is there any other item? Yes, Ms. Nellie?
I just had a quick question on ASD memorandum 089.
Okay. First, let me see if there's any others that would like to pull. Anything else? I do want to pull number four. So we've got one, four, and six. Yes, Ms. Hilding?
I'd like to pull two, three, and, yeah, just two and three.
Okay, so the only one we don't want is number five? All right. So I'm going to open it up for discussion on memorandum, memorandum 089.
I don't know if this is a Jim Anderson or a Dave Whiting question, but it says total project funding is 3.428 million dollars, yet the ask is, and the certification of funds is for 2.1 million. So where's the other 1.3? Did we already approve it or is it to come forward later? And why is it split?
Do you see the question?
Through the President, can you up-cast restate your question, please?
Yeah. It has, under the budget summary, that total project funding is 3.4 million dollars, but the memo is only asking for 2.1 million, so trying to figure out the other 1.3.
That's just for the construction cost.
So when do we approve the other 1.3? Or how does that all get completed?
Through the President, those have already been frankly approved and in most cases have already been performed, the planning and design, all that. So this is just for the, for the final phase and that is to prove the contractor to actually do the construction.
Okay.
And that's 2.1 million.
Thank you.
Are we good, Ms. Nellie?
I think so.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Hilding?
Yeah, I was just wondering, and I don't know if you know the answer, all the costs are the same for the gutters, but are the buildings all the same size? Like, I didn't understand that estimate. And then it said 23 companies were invited to bid, but only two companies submitted bids. Do you have any ideas on why we'd have such low response?
Yes, through the President. All the schools are identical, so they're all the same, so it's going to cost the same amount on the estimates. And then timing, as to when you put out the bids, has a lot, a lot of impact on it. With this particular project, the gutter systems, it's kind of specific, so you're only really going to get companies like Rainproof that will really address those because they know those issues inside and out. So that's the reason why you didn't get so many bids on it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, is that, can we move on to item number two, memorandum 081? Ms. Hilding?
I just had a question. I saw that this was a, that we had six submitted bids on this one. I was just wondering if, it looked like the district has its own estimate. Do the, do the bidders know the district's estimate when they submit their bids?
No.
So it is a blind bid and then we get a truly competitive bid because there's quite a large variance in what they present, so we can have more trust that it is a really good value in the bidding process. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments on item number two, memorandum 081? Okay, moving on to item number three, memorandum 099. And I believe, Ms. Hilding, you pulled this one also?
I just had a question. It said, so it sounded like December 4th through 6th is waived by the state and you only have to make up December 7th. But then it said, "We have two half-days on the 20th and 21st and then a full day on the 22nd." So that adds up to two makeup days to me. I didn't understand.
Through the President, the secondary schools and elementary schools do it differently. And so, and they can explain, but in the secondary schools, middle schools would go have a half-a-day one day and then high schools a different day. So elementaries are different than secondary, so we just put the total. We don't have permission yet. We were granted verbal permission, but that permission has to come after the board vote first. So this is to use the days that we have available and the days available for elementary and secondary are different. So the kids would have different opportunities, similar to now, to have school or not. But we wanted to, the days that we feel that we could get the outcomes done, which is communicating with parents, we really do believe we could make an effort to do that and have our parents feel satisfied that they have information about their children as well as satisfy having school days, we wanted to meet that as well. So we will request those days verbally, but the time we did get, yes, you know, we'll be flexible with your days, but we wanted to do our due diligence in effectively having school days for kids that we could. Specifically, those are just different days and I could have Kirsten and Glenn share the differences in those days. Oh, Mike could do that.
Through the President, to answer part of that question, those half-days we have, both in secondary and elementary right now, we already basically have a waiver from the state that those count as full instructional days. So while we will be making up some instructional time with our students, those two half-days don't actually make us any, any additional days on the calendar.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on that item? So moving to item number four, which is memorandum 094. And I pulled this one because I know this has come up before, but I have since gotten more information. And part of that information is, I think some of our board members were not, my understanding is that apprentices couldn't enter the program until '22 and now I understand they can enter it right out of high school. And that there are scholarships that are afforded and that the apprentices do get paid while they're working. And there was some other information I think Ms. Mitchell had come up with, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah.
So I happened to be speaking with somebody on another issue, Zach Fields, and he said to me, we were talking about the apprentice issue, and he said that he was actually in the meeting that former board president, Tam Agosti-Eslar, and member Kathleen Plunkett had been in with the assistant commissioner of, the deputy commissioner of the Department of Labor. And he said that they, he wasn't quite sure how the communication was, not clear, but he said, he was, his job, I can't remember what the, I can look it up, his job, when he was working for the Department of Labor, was to work with apprentice programs. And when they had the meeting, the deputy commissioner explained that from a state perspective, they really encourage apprentice programs and that it actually does not increase costs to put apprentices on the jobs. In fact, in some cases, it will decrease costs because people get paid commensurate with their experience level. So an apprentice would earn less than a full sal, a journeyman type of person would. The other thing I talked to him about was the issue of if a company doesn't have an apprentice program. He said, "Well, that's something the state, again, encourages. The Department of Labor has templates and support and it's at no cost to the companies for them to set up an apprentice program." He said, "It's actually quite simple to do." And then we were also talking about the reporting issue and he said, "Well, the way that companies have to report their time to the district, it's all laid out very clearly. There's no additional reporting burden for the apprentices." And in the rare cases where apprentices truly aren't available, then you would simply say, you know, they're, we touched base with this and this organization that provide, if they're a union shop, you know, "We touched base with the unions and they have no apprentices available." So that didn't seem to be, it sounded like, from his experience in that position, working with a lot of different contract-type situations and apprentices around the state, it really is beneficial to us because, from my perspective, we really are trying to increase CTE in the district. We know that Alaska is going to be facing a shortage of labor. We've been losing a lot of people out of state over the past few years because our state capital budget is essentially zero. So there's not very, up until the earthquake, there wasn't much construction going on in the state. So we have these wonderful programs, we're trying to build them up in the district. We have children, or young adults, 18-year-old legal adults who graduate from King Tech and sign on with sometimes union shops, sometimes organizations in town that aren't a union shop to apprentice with them. And so if we are raising these kids and giving them the training to go into trades, then having opportunities for apprentices to work on our jobs, I think is something that we should really support. So learning all of that information was great for me because it made me feel very comfortable with this policy that Member Donnelly is proposing and I see it as a win-win.
Ms. Hilding?
The Governance Committee considered this last June and I think it would be helpful to review the, listen in on the meeting again. I listened in a few months ago when Member Donnelly and I were discussing this. We had a robust presentation and I would hate for people to have to repeat things that they've already presented because maybe we just don't remember since June. So that would be, maybe if Katie could send that out to members and take the time to listen to all the sides of that argument, because it was very clearly laid out and Guardians did not vote to push it through to the full board. Well, and the 22-year-old thing, that was something I heard when I went to tour one facility. I've never held that up as example of all apprentice programs and that certainly wasn't a factor at the June committee meeting. So that's just my request that people, for the sake of respecting people's time and not having the same presentation again, to listen to the meeting.
Well, I think one of the reasons this was brought back up is because some of the information that we were given was contradictory to some of the information that we've gotten now, now that I'm, not that I'm saying anyone's lying or not telling the truth or whatever, but it seems to be some contrary information versus what the apprentice program is saying and what we're hearing from the district. So I wanted to make sure that this was well-vetted and that, I did go back and listen to the meeting, so I know what those concerns were. But we can certainly do that unless board members want to take a chance to listen to that, we can have it sent back out. I have a question of clarity. The information that's provided, are the misinformation or difference information, are you thinking that the district presented something inaccurately or that Tam and Kathleen did? Is that the suggestion?
Well, when I, I'm sorry.
When I spoke with Kathleen last week, she said that they had met with the deputy commissioner of the Department of Labor and that he had been, had said that it's more expensive to use apprentices, which was not what I had gotten from several people who are in the construction industry. So that was, it just was, as I said, it was coincidental. I was talking with Mr. Fields about something else and I said, "Oh, you know, you work in the union area, what, do you know anything about this?" And he said, "Well, actually, it's funny that you should say that because I arranged that meeting, I was in that meeting. It was very clear, I don't know how they could have left that meeting without that information, with that impression that it's more expensive."
I think there's a concern with the language as well as some other, so, you know, perhaps a suggestion to listen to that and then to come back and answer those questions or now, just to be clear. Okay. What specific things it was. It would be good to re-ground ourselves in the information. But certainly, the language in this proposal, there is concern, not that whether we do it or not. Right. But that may be a different vehicle in doing it. it or not, but that may be a different vehicle in doing it might assist. And there may be amendments to this. I just wanted to open up and see how we wanted to proceed with it. So if board members are okay with that, we'll disseminate that information so that you can have an opportunity to look at that. I know that my decision was, because I was there at that time, was weighted with what Kathleen and Tam came back with. The information they received, I think, is what caused me to vote the way I did, is because they confirmed what the district had told us. So at this time, that's what we'll do, and we'll have it on action item for next board meeting. Okay, number six. You want to tell us what that is?
Thank you. So, back in November, the, I have to get the commissioner, the Municipality of Anchorage Commission on Salaries and Emoluments of Elected Officials passed a resolution, number 2018-2, to increase school board members' salary and health insurance benefits. We were sent, everyone was sent a copy of that on December 14th in the board connect, is that the one from Dr. Bishop?
Yeah.
So you can pull it up. It equates to 11% pay increase. There has not been a pay increase since 2012. Absent anything the board does, this is an automatic pay raise. So we talk a lot about transparency, so I think it's very important that we make it very clear. My personal preference would be to freeze our school board members' stipend and benefits at the current levels until the start of the fiscal year 2022, '23. As the least senior board member, that would affect me the least amount, so I am mindful of that aspect of it. The way it's structured is if you are re-elected or a new board member this April, you would receive your raise this April, and then the members up for reelection next year would receive it next year, such that half of our board would receive a raise within the next 15 months. Given our need to lead and set the example for what we do in our district and the people who don't have raises, I'm very hesitant to accept this raise. It's not a criticism of the commission's work. I think they were diligent, there hasn't been a raise since 2012. I don't see anything wrong with their process, just on my comfort level of accepting it. School board members aren't paid universally around the country. Seattle Public Schools board members aren't paid. I just did quick searches. Minneapolis Public Schools, you have $14,000 to serve on their school board. So I'm just, so I have a motion. I don't know if I put that in a non-action item to freeze our pay, if I would do that now, or when it is an action item.
You would do it now, so it can become an action item.
Okay.
Would it come forward as a non-action at the next meeting?
I mean, there's no, you know, we have time.
At the next level.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll just say my motion. I moved to freeze school board members' stipend and benefits at the current levels until the start of fiscal year 2022, '23.
Second. And is there a board discussion now?
Oh, I meant, I meant to cite the board policy that, see, the entitlement of a board member to the compensation is established by the commission, is subject to yearly budget allocation. So typically, these, the commission's decisions are subject to the initiative and, what is it, the R1 initiative and the other one, where you go referendum, where the voters can say, we don't want that, but that would be very expensive for what is frankly probably a low-dollar amount. But under our board policy, it says that their commission's decision is subject to our yearly budget allocation, so we can choose not to pay it.
Like two or zero percent?
Ninety to 50.
And when was the last time there was a raise?
It was, let's see, I have it right here. It's, the last one was in 2012, but prior to that, it was, there was a pay increase in 2009, 2010, 2011, and 2012. And it equates to an 11% pay increase at a 1.5% annual rate. That's kind of what they based it off, 1.5 annual percentage raise. So what it would mean is if we pass this motion, this commission's decision would just kick into effect. I mean, it's in effect, it's right now in effect, this already happened, but our freeze, if we chose to do that, would just expire.
Would go till when?
My motion says fiscal year 2022, '23. That would be a 10-year difference between a pay raise, which I don't find that all compelling. And so the board could continue to extend it, or, but it does subject all of us to an election cycle, absent any theories.
Ms. Donnelly?
Trying to be consistent, at least for this evening, I do think this is an equity question because we've negotiated 000 contracts with so many of our bargaining units. I think it's fair for us to freeze our wages in place also, since we've asked for those commitments from so many of our district employees.
Ms. Foster?
A question from Mr. Anderson. When does this go into effect for the board seat that I'm sitting in?
It goes into effect this election cycle for anyone who is re-elected this April or newly elected. I'm sending some messages back now. I'm not sure legally that, what the rules are for the board overriding the commission on emoluments, I'm just not sure. I think we certainly ought to look into that unless, Member Hildy already knows.
If I may, and because it doesn't have an impact on me, I'm sort of torn between abstaining and letting you guys sort it out, and then just sort of offering an observation, but I'll let that come at the next meeting.
Well, I won't provide any legal advice on it. I was very careful in reading what the Home Rule Charter states and what the commission's is. And under the Home Rule Charter, the commission is, says that the way to change whatever decision is just as the same as ordinance is through the initiative and referendum, which to me meant, oh, we can't do anything. And then I checked our board policy, and it says that it's subject to our yearly budget allocation, which tells me that it's possible for us to freeze it. So it's something I would like us to consider. What was the other point?
Sure. I don't remember. Ms. Solomon?
Asked that in the intervening weeks, the president seek out a legal opinion on what our position can be on this and how it impacts things.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
In the intervening two weeks, the president seek out a legal opinion, basically to answer Member Foster's question.
So I guess, Mr. Anderson, we're asking you to report back to us and let us know what the official, okay, thank you.
Let me, never mind my sec, yes.
Whoever. So is there any other discussion on this? We'll get more information at our next board meeting. It'll still be on the non-action items, right? As a non-action item? Okay. All right. I think the only one it affects right away is if I get re-elected, when I get re-elected, let's put that back. All right, at this point, is there any other public testimony? Oh, I forgot new business, but do we have any new business? What are you doing over there, Ms. Foster?
I think I can take it up in board comment and signal my interest in pursuing some of the issues that were raised here earlier.
Okay. And at this time, is there any other public testimony on non-agenda or non-action items? Yes?
Thank you. Hello, my name is, do I need to turn this on?
Yeah, just, you see the button there? It's still.
You shouldn't get, oh, sorry, I did. Mommy, I'll move over to this one.
There you go. Oh, that one's working that too. All right.
My name is Mary Kretzschmar, K-R-E-T-Z-S-C-H-M-A-R.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I'd like to remind the school board that across all PEECS tested grades, only one-third of our students are proficient in reading. One out of three. I respectfully recommend ASD pause all new initiatives until we approach 80% that expected Tier One achievement. That's what I consider equity. So what is the plan?
I'm sorry we don't engage during testimony.
You don't engage during testimony?
It's our time to listen and your time to speak.
Okay. I'll be looking forward to maybe some measured responses to this question in the future.
You're always welcome to email the board too, and we can respond that way.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris Morrison.
Thank you. Any other testimony? Okay, at this time, is there any school board or administration comments or communications? Yes, Ms. Foster?
I would like to volunteer on behalf of the board to at least be one of the board members on an ad hoc committee to look into the issues surrounding recess and lunchtime and sort of examine the calendar and what our policy options are, so we can at least bring forward options and potentially some assessment of pros and cons. You know, I'll probably offer up a recommendation. You guys can have some fun with the straw person that I offer up, because I think it's a very interesting question with all the other pieces that we've got moving, and I'd like to encourage us to undertake sort of a disciplined approach in collaboration with the administration to look at, all right, we've gotten a lot of input from folks who have some concerns, how can we make adjustments, what options do we have to engage this conversation? So I think I'm imagining drafting essentially a committee charter to bring back to the board at the next meeting for their consideration. So I want to suggest that as one way to engage this.
Do I have a second, or, I mean?
I'll second it if it needs a second.
Are board members in favor of moving forward with this? Yes, Ms. Solomon?
I support the idea. I, again, I think that we have to be cautious in sending out a central edict to all schools, but looking at what latitude we can grant individual buildings to make decisions or teachers to make decisions in the course of the day about activity, nutrition and whatnot. I think that ideally, we want to empower each school to do the right thing for the students that are in front of them. And I'm pretty sure it won't look the same in every building, but at the same point, our role here is to set sideboards or policy guidelines, and I think a committee that involves parents and people at buildings and the board would be an excellent idea.
Ms. Hildy?
I think committees to look at particular issues are a wise and efficient choice. We are able to put a timeline, if we create an ad hoc committee, to say that the report should be, this committee ends at a set date, so I would want to see that if we do this committee.
I do have a question for the administration, and so I'm at a loss. I know that Sand Lake at one time was doing 60 minutes, but what was, I don't want to say mandate, but didn't we increase the time from 40 to 45 minutes and schools were able to do their own, whatever they want? Each school principal could make their own judgment as to how long, but we just said that it had to be at least a minimum of 45.
We did have a minimum of 45 outside of passing times for lunch and recess. Some schools, which we heard testimony today, there are different, some schools chose to have a longer recess, some, a longer reading. Some schools have not been able to figure out their schedules. I think a board member shared that, that a principal talked about having to redo schedule, trying to figure it out. Depending on the number of kids, it is easier to eat in your classroom, but then you have the gym for PE, but some like to, they're all really building level decisions, how they like to use their lunch and recess. You also had a school who spoke that they also added 15-minute snack time. So that's added to a food time that could go to a recess time, that could go to a lunchtime. Within the guidance that we have for building elementary schedules, it does have time in there that's unallocated, that schools, teachers even, can decide outside of school. So we have left it at the school level with the minimum guidelines that lunch, recess combined should be no less than 45 minutes, including passing time. That does not include, and you've heard some testimony tonight where they've worked on the speed at which we can deliver hot lunch. You know, I think those issues will always be, the speed at which in the, you know, September, we can get outside right now, you're not going to miss a piece of clothing. We wouldn't want our children to miss a piece of clothing. So it's just varied, but it's only 45 right now, but they were 60, so they did have some reduction. We didn't say, Sand Lake, go back to 60. We said, all schools have to have a minimum of 45. So Sand Lake is still less than they had in the past.
Ms. Donnelly?
I've really been trying to figure out where I would propose we should be on this issue. Obviously, there's different ways of measuring it, including the passing time, not including the passing time, trying to assess, but there is so many differences from school to school, campus to campus, it's very challenging to come up with what's the right uniform rule, given the shortness of our school day and we're trying to pack so much into it. But I do think, I do think I'm ready to support a longer minimum policy rather than the 45 minutes.
Well, I think we're in agreement that we're going to develop this committee, and you'll be coming back to us, Mr. Foster, with a recommendation?
If you have something.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other board comments? Guess what? We're adjourned.